Okay. Everybody stand for flags a little.
I love these trees.
I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess everyone will please turn off their cell phones.
For the meeting.
Do the roll call.
Tom Collins.
Here.
Clem Wazleski.
Here.
Mike Richmond.
Here.
Jim Gallantino.
Here.
Margaret Guber Nolte.
Here.
Mike Cristaldi.
Here.
Craig Pomisano.
Here.
David Carter.
Here.
Desmond Hesse.
Here.
Remy Pelosi.
Here.
Joe DiGiorolamo.
Here.
Rich Patterson.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the, with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should they receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. So, huh? Oh, yeah. Where is it? Okay. Can we get our approval minutes for February 23rd, 2017, and March 20th, 2017?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of decisions and resolutions, number nine dash 2017, master plan reexamination, number 10, 2017, Barry Schwartz, number 11, 2017, Melissa Divincenzo and Eric Holman, number 12, 2017, 101 South Brunswick Avenue LLC.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
On the agenda tonight is number seven, Robert and Amy Chipettes, 34 West Drive. That has been postponed until April 27th, 2017. I know that it's the second postponement. I know people in the public have come. The board granted the postponement. We apologize for that. We made sure that on April 27th, that will be a firm date. It will be heard that day, or they will have to withdraw it. So, anyone here from the public, if they want to be heard, will be, will have to come back on April 27th, 2017, at 6:30 PM at the same location. Additionally, Morgate Burger LLC, 7903 Ventnor Avenue, has also been postponed until April 27th. Any members of the public that are here for that matter should return on April 27th at 6:30 PM if they want to be heard on that. Thank you.
Okay, the, oh, I'm sorry.
May I add that those people that show up for these meetings, if you check the website, I do post the agenda at least 24 hours in advance for people that are traveling. So, I'm just, for the record, letting you know to check the website prior to driving.
Number six. Our first case is Hank and Ann Rovillard, 430 North Quincy Avenue, block 618, lots 30, in the S-40 district, to grant a C variances for six-foot fence and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Hank Rovillard, and I'm appearing tonight on behalf of my wife and family. As chairman said, we live at 430 North Quincy Avenue, and we're before the board tonight seeking a variance for a six-foot fence around the perimeter of our property.
Mr. Rovillard, just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. What we're going to do is we're going to let Mr. McLaren read his report, and then we'll put that on the record, and then you can present so everybody knows what the issues are.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I should have stopped you. Mr. McLaren, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My report is brief.
Should be on. That one works. I can handle this.
Is it on now?
Mm-hmm.
I keep pressing it.
I think you're right.
Right. It's only stay as all when I keep it pressed. All right. I spent more time learning how to use a microphone than my report is in length. Basically, the background is, as Mr. Rovillard said, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances at the city of Morgate in order to construct a new six-foot high fence within the rear yard. No pools or spas proposed. That concludes my report. Go ahead. At this point, I will call John Barnhart and request waiving his qualifications because I know he's testified here a million times.
That's fine. The board will accept his qualifications. Mr. Barnhart, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sir?
I do.
And your full name and address for the record?
John Barnhart. Office address, 400 North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City, New Jersey.
And just shortly, quickly, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. John, you personally viewed and inspected the property, correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the land use ordinance at the city of Morgate?
Yes.
And did you or someone under your control prepare the variance plan filed in support of this application?
Yes.
Would you describe the property for the board as it exists today?
Sure. This is Mr. Rovillard's home on Quincy Avenue. What he is proposing to do is to build a six-foot fence around the rear of his property, complying with all the setback requirements. It's not in the front yard. It's within the side and rear yards as permitted. The only variance that we're seeking, there's, I'll say, slight inconsistency in the ordinance. When you, when you propose a pool in your rear yard, you're required to have a six-foot fence. So, six-foot fences are prevalent throughout town, especially with new pool structures. However, if you go to the fence ordinance, if you don't propose a pool, the maximum permitted fence height is only five feet. So, what we're asking for is the permission to build a six-foot fence, but Mr. Rovillard does not currently have plans to construct a pool in the rear yard. So, we would, we would say that it's kind of like a hardship situation where a six-foot fence is a permitted fence height so long as you are proposing to construct a pool, but they choose not to build a pool at this time. And I think also the variance can be justified under a C2, where the benefits of the deviation outweigh any potential detriments. From a negative criteria standpoint, we don't see an impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, because as I mentioned, the zone plan and zoning ordinance permit six-foot fences, and we don't see a substantial impairment to the public good, because again, six-foot fences to neighboring properties are something that you see all throughout town. But we think that the variance is clearly justified. We think it's very minor in nature, and I personally believe at some point those two ordinances will probably become more consistent with one another in the future.
John, your fence detail.
Oh, I do want to bring one thing up about that, Roger. We did show a fence detail. They have not actually decided on a final fence, and because I'm personal friends with them, if I don't, if I don't give them the flexibility of a different fence, his wife's going to kill me. So, they're, they haven't decided which fence it's going to be yet, but it will be a maximum of six foot for the top of the pickets as the ordinance requires.
How about spacing between the pickets?
I don't, have you decided?
Solid? Are you talking solid wall?
Most likely solid wall, yeah.
Solid wall, six foot?
Yes.
Kind of like a compound? In my, in my view...
Well, we have, the plan we weren't...
Is that, is that the fence you're looking at?
Yeah, that's, yes. So, that's not solid, but we haven't...
Specifically defined the actual fence style.
That one's shown with a scallop top and space between there.
Yes.
That's a lot different than a solid fence.
Well, what I'm saying is, we haven't, I don't know the exact answer to that.
Some of them are tongue-in-groove, solid, put together, and they're solid fencing. And you're also coming out to the very front of the house, correct?
Yes.
Why out that far?
Well, we're going to...
Sure. I mean, it's approximately 20 feet back from the front property line.
Equal to the front of the house, both sides.
That's correct.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Why is six-foot fence instead of a five-foot fence?
Frankly, because of their dog. They have a, they have a large dog.
Yeah, we have a two-year-old Czechoslovakian shepherd that is pretty close to getting over what we think would be a five-foot fence. So, in lieu of protecting everybody in the neighborhood and keeping the dog, you know, out of sight lines of anybody walking by, a six-foot fence, we'd feel more comfortable with.
So, the people don't see the dog?
No, so the dog doesn't see people walking by and jump up on the fence, and I don't want the dog going over the fence.
I don't want to...
I never thought about that.
Yeah?
Just, I, look, just put it, I understand the concerns everybody has, but just, I hope you keep it in the perspective. I mean, if Mr. Rovillard puts a hot tub on his back patio, he doesn't even need to be here tonight. So, I mean, it's a 12-inch variance for a fence that by all the setbacks we're talking about, is a permitted location. I just want to make sure everyone, you know, understands that. I mean, I understand the concerns, I do, but I think you have to put into perspective with what your ordinance permits as well.
Yeah, we don't want to that, John. If I go for six-foot fences, why do I do six-foot? It's real, isn't it?
Frankly, I agree with what you just said, yes.
That's not the way we do it.
I understand that, Frank.
So, it's not necessarily the picture that's up there. It could be solid.
I should say, I don't know that answer. That's what we thought it was, and in talking about coming to the meeting, my wife went, are we stuck with that kind of, that scallop with the little pickets? And I said, I'm not so sure.
Based on the law, obviously.
Do you prefer that type more?
It'd be very solid.
Yeah, I think the board generally prefers the spaced fences.
Well, we can do that. I would agree to do that.
Because the ordinance kind of, there's some requirement for some spacing.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. That could be a condition of approval if we get approved.
Just for airflow. I think that would be like a offset to the six-foot fence when you make the spacing appropriate.
That makes sense.
You're not going to be a six-foot fence, then?
No, we want to be a six-foot.
The top of the, I'm going to call it a baluster, or an opus, or whatever you want to call it, is going to be at the six-foot, the highest point.
Correct.
It's going to swell down.
Assuming we use that version.
Right.
But if you could go six-foot with space, that would be preferable.
We need to know that.
Well, then I'll ask for six-foot with space. To follow up on counsel's position.
All right. Would you object to keeping it in the rear yard only?
Well, that, that doesn't, you know, keeping it just in, you know, we'd like, we'd prefer to have it come here, keep an animal in the back of the house.
About five foot across the front, where it slopes down the side yard to five foot in the front.
But this looks good.
Then the dog can jump over.
You know, I mean, coming down the side yards at six foot, till you get to the front, go across the front with five feet.
We're still looking like an alley.
Craig, the purpose of that, though, is still that if the dog gets out, it could hurt somebody or into somebody in the neighborhood.
Can I make another?
And you don't want an invisible fence because invisible fences are cruel to dogs.
Can I make another suggestion?
That was part of our consideration.
Hank, can I make another suggestion? Sometimes what we like to see is a five-foot fence with a one-foot lattice top, which kind of, you know, opens it up a little bit. Doesn't look like a big...
Yeah, that would be fine, too.
As imposing as a, you know, six-foot high solid.
Yeah, I mean, we have a 95-foot lot. We're not trying to smother the house or anything.
Right.
We just wanted to keep the dog in the backyard, so no one gets hurt.
So, you're agreeing to a five-foot regular fence with a one-foot lattice across it?
Yeah, I would do that.
Six-foot total.
Say you want to keep the dog in the backyard, why can't the fences, whether at the front of, in line with the front of the house, then move back a good distance, so the dog stays in the backyard, not the side yards?
Well, then it gives the animal a little more area to run around in the backyard.
You've got 95 feet.
Have you discussed this with your neighbors?
My one neighbor to the one side.
And nobody complained?
No, not that I know of.
Well, we'll see if anyone from the public's here. I don't think they are.
There's a really nice, older, I don't know what kind of tree is that, a holly tree. Will that be leaving? I don't know if it's in front or behind the fence. It's a real nice aged holly tree. I couldn't tell. I don't know.
I don't think we envisioned removing anything.
Okay, good. Thank you.
The sustainability people are asking us to try to preserve established trees now, and it's a good point, and it's a good thing to have. And you do have the one tree on the corner, right, the left corner of the property that she's speaking about. That's the holly tree, yeah. It would be like that to stay.
Okay.
But you're, you're not for putting the fence across the back of the house? Like, when you come up, just break it at the back of the house, so it's not even a visible fence to anybody? Still got a big run for the dog.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't think about that. That's the plan was to do it that way.
I mean, that way, going down the street, you wouldn't even know it was there, and it's in the back, and you have your privacy. I think bringing it up the front, we're starting to make our place look like alleys. You know, everybody's got a fence there with their dog barking at their dog, and it just doesn't look right.
That was my thought also, with this rear section of the house, right here, going across, on the left side, the rear section, which still gives you quite a bit of yard.
Yeah, I mean, I would do that. That's fine.
Because there's a brand-new house across the street from you, and when you look back, that, that six-foot fence they have is solid, and it's way in the back of their house, whereas yours become all the way out to the front, almost equal to the front of the house, and I think it will make it look like a compound, myself.
Okay.
You know? That's why I was hoping we could maybe go back some with that on, on the property. You know, John, you see where I'm talking? Yeah, equal to that part?
To what, to what point?
Back to the rear of that addition there, right there. Yes.
You prefer to have the condensing unit visible from the street?
Yes, on both sides also, though. One side back, the other side would be back.
You prefer to have the condensing unit visible from the street as opposed to having it in the back?
Back farther, off the, off the front of the house.
Are the condensing units right on the corner there?
Right here.
Right. Okay.
Right. Yeah. But do you think if you brought it in front of the condensing units, I mean, no, I'm not saying, I like your idea, but I'm just saying, instead of at the corner, just bringing them to the front, the condensing unit?
Right.
Right there. Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Okay. Does any, any other board members have anything to say?
Just to clarify for the applicant, what the final recommendation was.
Well, we're going to, I'm going to have, yeah, we're going to do that, okay? Is anybody from the public here to speak? No public?
Yes.
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm here quite by accident. My name is Stephen Shamen. I live at 8712 Fremont. I know Hank very well. I know the dog very well. From a safety point of view, given that dog, a five-foot fence is going to let that dog come over, and it's a big dog, and I'm in favor of the six feet to protect the people in the neighborhood, little kids, especially in the summertime. So, I think you should please grant that kind of variance. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll swear in a minute.
Public portion's closed. Anyone?
Just let me get it straight, Mr. Rovillard. For the, where the fence is going to start, is there an objection to moving the fence back to the back of the house? Is that what the...
The corner, the back corner.
The back corner rather than the front corner?
Right.
Are you okay with that, or do you want to proceed with the other? I just want to make sure. Okay.
Both sides of the house.
Yeah, I understand.
Or both sides of the house, correct?
To the...
Yes.
To the back corner, right.
All right. Yeah. So, the, so the fence style will be five-foot picket spaced according to the ornaments, and another foot with lattice on top to make a total six foot. That's what I'm, on the record, put that, so when we get the approval, you guys don't, if you get the approval, you don't. It's not something you didn't want, that's all. Okay, all right. Is it okay, Mr. Barnhart? I mean, not, no, no, I'm saying, is that, do you understand the, the conditions? Okay, all right. All right.
And just one question. There's no desire to, you don't have any plans to put a pool or spa in? Well, we didn't think about that, but we may. I mean, right now, we don't have a plan for that. Okay.
All right, we get a vote?
I make a motion, we...
It would be a motion for a C variance relief to allow six-foot fence with the conditions that it be, begin on the back end of the house, the back corner of both sides, as well as having the appropriate spacing and the one-foot lattice.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Very nice of you to make accommodations to the board. I think it's all very de minimis. If it were me, I'd submit plans with a little hot tub on the back and not put it in and get my fence that I want, but as it stands now, I will vote in favor.
Clem Wazleski.
Clem, Mike.
I'm not real happy about it, but with the two conditions that the applicant has agreed to, I think as far as the visual objection to the fence, most of that goes away. So, I'll vote yes.
Mike Cristaldi.
I agree with Clem on that, and giving up with, going with the board, I agree that that works better, and I think a lot of the people that are here don't realize how much trouble we're having with fences. We're going to hear two more tonight on fences, and it's just progressively getting worse for the city, so I vote yes on it.
Margaret Guber Nolte.
I think the request is de minimis. I see no objection from neighbors, so I vote in favor of the application.
Jim Gallantino.
I think Mr. Shamen put it in perspective. What's the dog's name?
Spanger.
That, so I know when the dog bites me, what, what his name is, because you guys wanted a five-foot fence. I don't see any problem with it. I vote yes.
Mike, Craig Pomisano.
With the changes we made to it, I approve it. I vote yes.
Mike Richmond.
I think pushing the fence back really makes it an non-issue, so I'm going to vote yes also.
Okay, the application passes seven to nothing.
Thank you.
Hank, will you come sign, please?
Okay, our next case is Kennedy J. Sabat, D.O., 18 North Osborne Avenue, block 216, lot 11, in the S-40 district, to grant a C variance, fence location, pool equipment location, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Okay? And Mr. Joe DiGiorola is going to reclusive himself?
We are on Sabat.
Kennedy Sabat.
Number nine. So, Mr. McLaren is going to read his report in, and then we'll proceed.
Okay. Thank you, board chairman, members of the board. My report was originally dated January 24th, 2017, revised March 29th, 2017. Background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances at the city of Morgate in order to construct a new six-foot high fence within the front yard for a corner lot. The area of the fence would encompass a pool and extend out several feet to the, near the property line. The property had previously received a variance for front yard setback along Winchester Avenue. The proposed pool was shown on the previously approved plans with a compliant fence. Just to, so the variances required are a fence located within a front yard, it's a C variance, and a setback for the pool equipment in the garage, where pool equipment is 10 feet from any side yard, and less than 10 feet is proposed. So, there's actually two variances that are required. My comments have been revised to show that the zoning chart has been revised to show 36% landscape coverage, and it still complies with the pool and patio added. I calculated there to confirm this figure. The revised fence location allows a driver better vision. The Astro site triangle is utilized, which is the standard to determine site triangle for stopping site distance calculations. The design speed should be 30 miles per hour. The 30 mile per hour design speed still allows a clear sight. These are my calculations and confirming Mr. Ponzio's calculations. And that concludes my report. It's up to the testimony of the applicant.
Sure. Hey, please, the board, my name is Andrew Miller. I represent Kennedy and Jackie Sabat in this appeal. With us today, we have Art Ponzio. I understand that the board took some testimony. I'm sorry. I understand that the board took some testimony at the last hearing. Is that testimony part of the record, or are we starting over?
What would you like to do? You want to make it part of the record, or would you like to start over?
I don't want to put, I don't want to put the board through any repetition, and that's why I ask.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if there's going to be substantial changes made to the last application as to what you're requesting, then I would probably say start from the beginning. If you're really not making any substantial changes, because I don't think any drawings were even submitted here, which is kind of hard for the board to actually picture what's going on, so hopefully you can give us a description of what's going on.
I believe they, they're going to provide exhibits.
But they did.
We, we have exhibits. I think the, the testimony that I'm wondering if you need, and I probably spent more time talking about whether it's necessary or not, is, is how we got here.
Yeah. Mr. Miller, I would suggest, and you can do what you want, I would suggest you just start, so we can have a clear record of what you're asking for.
Sure.
In case there's any issues.
Sure. So, to set the stage, there was a plan, there was a pool. The pool was constructed differently than the plan specified. Dr. Sabat can explain that very briefly. Dr. Sabat?
He needs to be sworn in.
I'm going to swear in first.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Sabat, can you raise your right hand, sir? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just your name for the record, and speak in the microphone, please.
Kennedy J. Sabat.
Thank you, Dr. Sabat.
Dr. Sabat, did you build this house, or did you buy it constructed?
The house was constructed. It was a spec home. The original plans included a pool with dimensions. When we ended up going to purchase the home, we found out what the cost of the pool was, which was very steep, so we elected not to have the pool put in by the builder, or the seller, I should say, and we elected to have the pool put in independently with the same setup.
And did you have a meeting on-site with the pool contractor?
Yes, we did.
And what if anything ensued at that meeting?
When he did his measurements compared to the drawings of the house, he said that the size of the pool will not fit based on the land itself. He said, why don't we just make it narrower and longer? And I said, is that okay? He goes, yeah, sure, that's okay. You could do that. And I didn't know at the time that it wasn't the right thing to do.
Right.
And I didn't know at the time that it wasn't the right thing to do.
And you're here today seeking a variance for approval of the pool as constructed?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we've got, Martha Ponzio is our engineer, and Mr. Ponzio has...
Can you speak into the mic?
I, I apologize.
There's another microphone there. You're welcome to walk in.
Can I make a little correction there? The, the, the pool doesn't need a variance. There's no, there's no variance for the pool. It's for the pool fence.
It's, it's the fence.
Right.
That's correct. That's correct. But it's, and Mr. Ponzio will explain that.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Ponzio, wanna get sworn in? Okay. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Certainly.
And your name and business address, sir?
Mr. Ponzio Jr., 401 North Pembroke Avenue, L.A.
Okay, can, Art, can you take the microphone? Yeah, but, thank you, Peter. You may proceed.
Okay. Let's talk photographs. Please. Okay, thank you.
Art, let's call that A1.
Okay. Photographs of the site. The first photograph was taken from the corner of Winchester and Osborne Avenue. You see it right at that location. That's the new home that was built on the property described by Mr. Dr. Sabat. This is a shot taken directly toward the subject of tonight's hearing, swimming pool in this location, single-family home to the right side, and Dr. Sabat and his wife's home to the left side. On the upper left of the photograph, more of the detail, so you can see the condition of the property. It is a current, it was taken a couple days ago, the photograph. You can see the rather narrow and long shape of the pool described by Dr. Sabat. Pool's a very tight proximity to the edge of the porch, no more than a foot away. On the opposite side to the property line, the pool is about 6.3 feet away, six-foot being the requirement, so it does meet the side yard setback. Chairman Richmond said that correctly, the pool itself does not need any variance relief. To the rear, the pool is situated a few feet from the edge of the garage. That garage is on the subject property, back in the, let's call it the southwest corner of the property. And in the front of the prop, of the photograph, the front edge of the pool is essentially coincident with, or in line with the front wall of the house extended. This would be A2. This is a colored version of the variance plan that was submitted to the board. You can see clearly the pool location here. I, I mentioned it's coincident with the front wall of the home extended. You can see it there. The setback is shown at 6.33 feet to the property line, common to the lot, to the, adjacent to the westerly side. And there you can see in plan view, what I mentioned a moment ago in the photograph, how tight the pool is to the house. There was a question also in the report relative to the pool equipment. You don't see that here. The equipment will be inside the garage. It's tighter to the property line than the requirement, but nonetheless, it will be in, on a platform elevated inside the garage and not exposed to public view whatsoever. There's ample room in, inside the garage for that purpose. Originally, I guess it was a month or so, maybe two months ago, when the applicant appeared before the board, it was some customer that had given, there was a proposal on the table then to have a fence around the pool, or required to have a six-foot fence around the pool, as everyone knows. The proposal at that point was to have the fence out at the front property line. And then the fence would return along the sideline, connecting back to the garage, and then likewise connect back to the front of the house. When, we were contacted by the applicants, we looked at that, and we were sensitive, of course, in all these cases, to the neighboring properties, especially the property to the right-hand side with the driveway is located, Winchester Avenue being one-way, one-way to the west. So approaching traffic to the site comes from our site, our home, toward the neighboring property. So when we looked at that, and we laid out the, the site, the appropriate site triangle for traffic of this speed, there's a manual, design manual we go through. We looked at it in the office and plotted this out. And Mr. McLaren has confirmed in his, in his dissertation this evening that our mathematics were done correctly. So it, it's depicted here on the drawing, so that this area would be what we call a clear site triangle with no obstruction higher than eighteen inches, which meets the state, state and national standard. We plotted that such that a, a vehicle parked in this location, typical vehicle, approximately sixteen feet in length, which is about an average length for a vehicle today, a lot of them much, much smaller, as we know. The driver's view, if you back out of your driveway and you reach the property line, you haven't crossed the property line yet, you're not with the back of your car, would not be onto the sidewalk, the driver's view would be clear because of the site triangle that we would implement on the property, where no landscaping or anything of that nature would be constructed more than eighteen inches high. The fence would be behind that line. We thought that was an appropriate location because it does provide the applicant some reasonable space to utilize their property as they would like to do. Because, as I mentioned, we're so tight around the, the other three sides of the pool, there's essentially no sitting area, no, no maneuvering area or useful area around the pool. It's just the fact of what we're, the situation that we're dealing with. So we had that opportunity to put the patio into the front. We backed it up with a front yard setback of eight feet, which gives us opportunity to, to clear the site triangle, as I mentioned a moment ago. We also went through the, the calculation for total site coverage, because that's always also important. And the drawing, as you see it depicted here, meets the requirement for site coverage, meets the requirement for site landscaping, meets the requirement for front yard landscaping. So there's no variance associated with the addition of the paver area that you see depicted on the drawing or the pool. And by the way, the new interpretation of your ordinance is such that swimming pools are also counted toward lot coverage, whereas previously, they were not. So with, with all that in consideration, calculated and all, and as you see it, this property will meet a lot coverage requirement. So we're trying to make the best out of the situation that we can. And I think by holding back the, the front fence, the eight feet, minimum of eight feet, does give us clearance for the adjoining property, so there'll be no intrusion on their view corridor, looking down the street, looking into the easterly direction for cars approaching. We show some landscaping in the front of that, and that's just for aesthetics, that we wanna improve the complete look, the vista of the property from the street frontage. This landscaping will be installed at no more, as I say, and maintained, no more than eighteen inches in height. In addition to that, we've had extensive conversations with the, the applicant, and they've met different fence contractors out here. We want to make this as beautiful as we possibly can. They've changed their idea for the fence in consultation with our office and the contractors. It's going to be a black iron picket-style fence. The black iron is absolutely beautiful, six-foot in height, wide open for vision through the fence. So again, we wanna make this as open as we possibly can, as beautiful as we possibly can, satisfy the neighbor to the extent we can, make certain that there's no impediment to their views down the street. And I think, when I look at all of that in concert on balance, I think it's a reasonable plan to try to address a situation that's unfortunate. It, it happened, as you, you heard a moment ago. We're trying to make the best of it that we can with no impact whatsoever to our neighbor.
Art, how, how far is the fence proposed off of the sidewalk property line?
Off the side property?
Well, no, the side, front sidewalk.
Off the sidewalk, it'd be, it would be eighteen feet.
From the fence would start?
Oh, sorry, from the curb line, it would be eighteen feet.
From the curb line?
From the sidewalk.
How far off the house would the fence be? From the, from the structure of the house?
Thank you. Would you extend this line, ten feet?
The proposing ten feet away from the house with a fence.
Which leaves it a distance of eight feet here.
And the eighteen-inch shrubbery, shrubbery would be in front of that fence?
Correct.
Okay.
Arthur. Arthur, on the safe plan you have here, to the property line, which runs right along the sidewalk, the inside of the sidewalk, you have sixteen point six-four feet. And then you show from the property line to the beginning of the fence, eight feet.
Correct.
So it actually isn't according, if these numbers are correct, it's not coming out ten feet. It's coming out like eight feet, eight and a half feet.
I'll explain that to you. The dimension of the ten is from the actual edge of the water. There's a coping.
All right, okay.
Where the coping comes out and is essentially along the line of the house. But the actual edge of the water in the pool is back about a foot, four inches.
Okay.
And, and of course, the board understands, and it's clear to the board, that this is a corner property with two front yards.
Anybody else on the board?
So do you, do you lose use of the garage completely?
Garage? Do we lose the use of the garage?
Well, you're putting, yeah, because you're putting the equipment in the garage.
Yeah. Up on a platform in the garage.
Okay.
The front of the vehicle can fit underneath. And also, there's, as you can see, the parking is extensive in the front.
Okay.
Sixty, sixty feet long.
And actually, let me add to that, that the parking spaces in the driveway accommodate all the parking needs. The garage is actually extra space.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I don't really ask this question. It's my understanding that this pool was not built in accord with the filed plans and has been red-tagged. How can we consider all this stuff relating to a pool?
Jim, has it been red-tagged, the pool itself?
The pool wasn't built to the size that was originally approved on the plan.
Right. But it hasn't been, but it's still not a variance, correct? It's built in accordance?
The pool, that's all I can say, is the pool wasn't built to the original approved plan.
Right.
So...
So with this proposal, assuming it's granted, that that'll be modified.
Right.
Right? Assuming that.
How can you grant this unless you grant the pool? Doesn't the pool have to come first?
If, if this same exact pool came into my office for approval, I couldn't deny it. There's nothing to make me deny that pool.
So Roger, you're saying that the pool is existing if they file the right planned conformance?
Correct.
Right.
Right. It's amended.
Say that again.
The planned conformance of the pool.
No, it doesn't. Jim just said it doesn't.
I think they're referring to the old plans.
Jim said it wasn't the pool that was submitted.
That he permitted.
But if they, right, so if they come in with a picture of that pool on a plot plan and ask for a permit, Jim would have to give it to them. The pool was permissible. Got it?
Yeah, but that's the situation. You prefaced your statement with if.
Well, when?
It hadn't happened.
The pool's not up for a variance.
Right.
It's an illegal pool.
No, it's not. It meets all the setbacks.
But it wasn't built according to the filed plans.
It doesn't matter. You can, you can, if, you can switch the pool around as long as it meets the setbacks.
I think what you're saying is that the prior plans submitted had a different pool, correct? The prior plans that were approved before.
That Jimmy permitted.
Right, that Jimmy permitted. They're now coming in, and they're asking for variances. And I think what we're hearing is that the pool is, even though it's not the same as it was under the permit, they can modify the pool and get approval tonight. I'm not saying it's not.
But they're not suggesting they're modifying the pool.
You don't have to modify the pool.
Their plans, their plans look like it's a modified pool, that's what.
It's not.
No, it's not a modified.
It's permitted as is.
Okay, well, then if it's permitted as is.
Only by zone.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we're not here, we're not, I mean, we're not here to enforce the code.
The pool meets all the setbacks, setback requirements, and it also does not infringe on the landscaping coverage. So the pool, even though it's, wasn't built, you know, it should've been, well, not should've, but if, we wouldn't be here if they would've put it where it was supposed to be or made it shorter. The pool itself is not a variance, okay? Everybody's clear on that? Good. Okay. Who else? Anybody else on the, on the board wanna speak?
If the pool was built as stats, then it would've been a three-foot.
Correct.
If that's would've been equal to the house, and it wouldn't be out eight feet.
And they would've had space. Right. They wouldn't need it. That's what I'm, that's why we're here.
We're here for the fence variance, right?
Right. Right.
Well, they're asking for it to be permitted in the front yard.
This won't require a variance or anything. You want a little deck area in front of the pool so you can sit with chairs. Build it over top of the pool. Build the deck area over the top of the pool. Just move it back, put your deck there, put the fence where it belongs. They walk out of this room and can do it without us.
This is the pool. They want to put a deck area out here. Put the deck area here for the top of the pool. They put the fence up, because they can walk out of here without us. We accept this, we're saying Marigate. We accept this, we're saying Marigate. Every month, we're getting slammed with fences in different directions.
And the next thing you know, the city's gonna look like a zoo, you know, with cages all over the place. And I, I don't think Margate wants that. Then I'm trying to go the best I can to see why we can do that. But I mean, if you, if you did that, you wouldn't even need us to, to do anything. It would give you your deck area. It would make your pool the right way. You know, you wouldn't even have to come back to us.
Have you talked to the neighbors at all since the last meeting?
We, we have. And the immediate next door neighbor, the owner of the property with the driveway next door.
Right.
Is here, and we've shared our plan.
Okay.
With, with her, and I, I can't speak for her, but I, I don't think she's satisfied with, with the plan that we've submitted.
Why don't we hear from the public first?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so why don't we have the publics come up and talk, and we'll go from there?
All right. So we need a motion open to the public?
Make a motion.
Second? Okay. Ma'am, can you approach the microphone? Thank you. Could you, could you raise your right hand, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I will, thank you.
Thank you. And your name and address?
Mary Lou Adams Crimbering.
Mary Lou Adams?
Yes. Crimbering.
How do you spell your last name? I'm sorry.
C-R-I-M-B-R-I-N-G.
Thank you, Ms. Crimbering.
You're welcome. One of the two things happened here. One, the pool company made a terrible mistake by moving the pool from the approv, approved plan location. If this is true, the pool company should correct its mistake. Or two, as the applicant testified last month, the pool company representative told them to install it first and then get a variance. Neither reason justifies a variance. There is no benefit to the city or the neighborhood to allow this variance. The fence will impede our view of Winchester Avenue as we try to exit our driveway. If you look down Winchester Avenue, you will not find any fences that extend into the front yard. Please don't start here. The neighborhood does not want this. We don't see how this variance is in any way keeping within the master plan. Thank you very much. Anybody have a question?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak?
Could I actually ask a question?
Sure.
Sure.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I just had one question for you.
Can you come back up to the microphone, please? Thank you, Ms. Crimbering.
Originally, when the applicant came at the last hearing, they were requesting it be essentially to the curb line. They've now gone back eight feet. Is there at any point that you'd be satisfied with, satisfied with?
Not really, no. As it would, if somebody mentioned in the last, talking about the dog and so on, it would look like a stockade, number one. It's bad enough where it is, right along the side of the house, the front of the house, equal to, but it would be in our face, and that with the neighbors as well.
I was just wondering if there was some magic number that you were wishing for.
I, I really don't feel like I can say that.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name and address?
Luke B., and it's eighty-seven oh-one Winchester. I'm directly across from the, the neighbor, and I, sorry to meet ya, that's why I did introduce myself. If you're basing your fence view from the speed thirty miles an hour, Winchester, they go fifty miles, sixty miles an hour down Winchester. We have a porch, we see it all the time. And I do agree that the person who installed that pool should, should really, you know, fix it and put it the way the approved drawings show. Because I don't think, you know, you guys would approve the drawings if they came in as such, right? So I'm just, you know, and that, and they do, they go sixty miles an hour down Winchester.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name and address, please?
Louis Feldman, two oh six North Pembroke. My wife and I ride bicycles all around town in the, in the warm weather, when weather permitting. And from this drawing, even if it's set back eight feet, this couple's car would be on the sidewalk before they would have a view of any oncoming traffic. But what I'm concerned about is, as a witness to many, many children riding on the sidewalk, men and women with baby carriages walking the sidewalk, this couple would not see them backing out of their driveway. I see it as a clear safety hazard to have this fence even eight feet out. I also noticed the next page, the police department in one way is very crazy about this idea either. So it's my feeling, I apologize for meeting like this, but I think this fence, as proposed, would be a serious safety hazard to the people of Margate.
Hi, I'm Gail Margolin. I live at one oh one North Pembroke on the corner, sort of adjacent to eighteen North Osborne.
Ms. Margolin, could you raise your, I have to swear you in. Sorry about that. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I too believe that it is unfortunate what has happened with the pool and that the pool company should have installed the pool as proposed. And in that, if that would have happened, they would have had room for chairs because the pool would have been set back. And an eight-foot fence, and we see it, our, our porch is directly across from there on Winchester Avenue. And the cars do come speeding down. In the summer, people go the wrong way on that street. It is definitely a safety hazard. And I mean, a black fence that you could see through, I'm sure it would be beautiful, but I believe that it is a safety risk. And I have a concern with that. And I didn't know also what was proposed along the side of the pool. Was that going to be a solid fence or also a see-through fence? Okay. Well, I'm just concerned about the, the six-foot fence coming out eight feet. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sir?
I do.
And your name and address?
My name is Ronald Gruppo. I live at eighty-six oh six Winchester Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm the next corner up. I have concerns about the fence being, going in there because we have grandchildren that ride their bikes around that block, and we walk our dogs on a leash, not like the vicious dog before us. And I have concerns about cars backing out of there, and I share my concerns with Luke that no one goes down Winchester Avenue at thirty miles an hour. You know, everyone speeds down there. If you would put a police officer at the corner in Nassau or Osborne, it would increase the city's welfare quite a bit, you know. But I sympathize with Mr. Sabat's situation. I agree that the pool was put in the wrong place. I don't believe that we should be asking the neighbors to acquiesce or change our opinions about how we feel about the neighborhood. I have concerns with trees being cut down. I have concerns with green space being taken away. I have concerns with fences being put all over the place, you know. I moved to Margate thirteen years ago because I liked the neighborhood. I liked the way Margate was set out. Now it's becoming fences, huge houses squeezed into small lots, and then you're asking the neighbors to, you know, go along with it. I don't believe that the pool, the way it's built now, would be approved with the fence sticking out as far as it would have to stick out. I hope there's a consideration made for the next door neighbors. I also agree that you can't see children when they're backing out. And to put them in a situation where they'd have to take on risk like that is not fair to them. It's not fair to our community to keep asking for changes. The master plan is in place for a reason. We need to go back to making sure that we stick to that master plan. And like I said, I do sympathize with the applicant's request, but, you know, the pool is not, is in the wrong place. You know, the pool should be moved. You know, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, public portion, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's fine. Just, if you could go to the mic, Mr. Miller and Mr. Ponzi will take the mic. Thank you.
To respond to some of the concerns. Thank you very much. Mr. Ponzi, you heard the testimony that the sight line wouldn't be evident until the car was on the sidewalk. Do you agree with that statement?
No, our calculations show that it's not correct, and I think it was also confirmed in the report from the city planner. The planner. It's evident here on the drawing as well. We designed it such that it would definitely clear the sight of view. That's how this is laid out. We started with a vehicle, as I said, approximately sixteen people, a typical vehicle.
I'm sorry, so just to reiterate, will the car be on the sidewalk when you have that view down the street?
Have the view without the car being on the sidewalk.
Okay. And of course, a cautious driver is going to maintain a view towards oncoming traffic during the entire back out from the driveway, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We all do that.
Now, you also heard the comment about danger to children in the area. Is the concern about approaching children or approaching bicyclists any different than the concern of oncoming traffic?
I share every concern. I have children and grandchildren, so it's a tough question. But the reality is that the fence back, as we show it, eight feet from the sidewalk is no different than landscaping on probably forty percent of the properties throughout the entire city of Margate. There's many properties in this vicinity where the landscape goes right to the property line. There is, there are homes across the street. The actual walls of the buildings directly across the street are five feet from the property line. Our fence is eight feet. Look at the clearance, six, almost seventeen feet to the wall of the building. So it's quite generous when compared to what's right across the street.
So following up on the landscaping comment, to install giant arborvitae doesn't require any approval from this board, does it?
No, but the point I'd like to make about that. This is, it's interesting, a case like this. I'm extremely sensitive to everything the neighbor said, and I don't disagree with anything the neighbor said. As well as being an advocate for our client, there's a middle ground here. And the interesting thing with a case like this, the middle ground is this zoning board. By that, I mean, if we were not here and a fence were built in line with the front wall of the building, that would be fine. There'd be no variance whatsoever, and they could, they could do that tomorrow with a permit from Mr. Galantino. They could come out and install landscaping along the property line. He was entitled to do it. Most people do it. You may want to buffer for your, from your pool, put your fence in line with the building, put your nice landscaping, carry that out maybe, beautiful as it may be, could go right at the front property line. It could be right across the front of that pool. It could be whatever landscaping, and some of it is quite beautiful. What I'm saying is, the board can control that. Whereas if we leave here with no consensus tonight, there's no control. You can control this and make it better for the neighbors and for the developer, the applicant, I'm sorry. By that, I mean, you control the fence type, the height we're locked in with. Your ordinance says six feet. You can control the landscaping. You can say, you're not going to put landscaping here because you're going to block the view of the cars. It makes sense. I agree with that. But this owner or this owner may sell the property to someone else, and that other person might want to put landscaping. But if you have a resolution that says no, you're restricted forever and ever. It follows the land. There will be no landscaping in that free sight triangle in front of that property, eight feet back, ten feet back, pick a number. You can work with that. You can control that and make that, make this better. And I think that this is a perfect opportunity for that because I see there's discrepancy between the folks, and I, I can't disagree with it. My own house, I have a backup driveway just very similar to this, and I always am careful in backing up, but you can't always see all the time. So if I knew my neighbor could never put a shrub blocking my point of view, that would be important to me. And if you have the opportunity to control that. So I think there's a meeting of the minds can come together here and, and really make this better. And I think, I personally think, from a planning perspective, with my knowledge of this property and the studies that I've done on this piece of property, I think it's the right thing to do. Rather than to say that, you know, guess what, fence should go in front of the building, right along the line. You can't disagree with that. I have no dispute to that. Because that's what your ordinance says. But this is an opportunity to make it better. You have an opportunity to control that.
All right, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we just reduce the fence to four feet as the building code states and not to six foot? And also, the poles that are out in the driveway, would the fence line be on the ocean side of the pole or the street side of the pole?
You mean utility pole?
Yes.
There is a utility pole somewhere right along the line. I have it. Here it is.
Fence is ocean side.
It's here. What was this question again?
Where is the fence? On those poles?
It would be toward the, toward the land side, toward the house from the, from the pole.
Okay, back to the four-foot fence. Would the client be interested in a four-foot fence, Mrs. Adams? What about that? Small R fence? The board would have to make a decision. I mean, that's the building code, is a four-foot fence. It would be a variance. Why? You're allowed a four-foot fence around the pool. You know that building code.
We, we would support, we would support that.
I have one question too, and I don't know if Arthur should answer this or if Roger, but if this were not a corner property, would we be hearing a variance for this?
No. If that was the front yard, yes.
No, if it's not a front yard, I'm saying if it's, because it's basically a side yard that just happens to be on the front street.
You'd, you'd have to get measurements, I think the fences from what.
If Winchester Avenue was another property, no.
Well, you'd have to get measurements for other fences.
If this was a side yard? It's no, there would be no variance.
No variance.
Go ahead. Yes.
I'm just trying to visualize this. So you're saying that the fence along the side would be a see-through fence, correct?
Spindles, yes.
Clear, clear view, in other words. But is the fence along the house here, solid fence?
No, clear, same thing.
Clear too, all the way. So there would be no obstruction of sight for these neighbors to see anybody walking on the sidewalk?
Correct. Yes.
Do you have a sample of the fence that we could see?
I do not have one. Do you have one?
It looks like a wrought iron fence.
Yeah.
Wrought iron, okay. Black wrought iron, but it's aluminum.
Aluminum wrought iron fence.
One-inch pickets.
So it's not a solid fence.
No, no, no. One-inch pickets in a two-inch corner.
We did that for that reason.
Okay, okay. Again, I'm just concerned about the safety. Okay, thank you.
Now, we need to, we need to re swear you in for this application. Sorry, sir. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
And your name again for the record?
In the microphone, please.
Stephen Shamen.
Thank you, Mr. Shamen.
I'm going to recommend you get an opinion from the city solicitor for the following reason. Listening to the fact that the police department has an issue with this fence, depending upon how you rule, I'm thinking there are plenty plaintiff personal injury lawyers in this town. If there's an accident because someone is coming down the wrong way, going fifty miles an hour, they don't see a kid, and the kid is killed, injured, the city may be liable. I can't opine on that. I'm not an expert on municipal law. But I think if the board wants to be careful that the city is protected and the taxpayers are protected from paying for this kind of liability, the city solicitor should opine on this. Thank you.
Thank you for the opinion.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, public portion is closed. Anyone else from the board?
Just as a follow-up real quick. On this vote, what Mr. Ponzi said makes a lot of sense because they could run right out to their sidewalk, twelve-foot-high arborvitae, and block everything. And there's no law that can prevent them. They can put them in just like Gallagher did on Bettner Avenue. So are we amending this size of the fence? Are we keeping the landscaping out so that there is still clear view through the fence?
The proposal, it's at eighteen, it's no greater than eighteen inches. The proposal is, their application is that it be no greater than eighteen inches of landscape. And that would be a condition of approval, if it's approved.
May I make a comment? I believe the police input is the letter of February seventh, which predates this revised plan. So I think that the concerns of the police department were to the original plan, which called for a solid fence that came all the way to the sidewalk.
I believe that was accurate, yes. Thank you.
Yep.
Just a point of clarification. Thank you.
So my question is, I'm sorry to make you sit down, Mr. Miller. The application is being amended at this point in time for a four-foot fence of the same nature, correct? Or do you want to go through with a six-foot fence?
My clients are amenable to a four-foot fence.
And that's four foot at every angle, correct? All around four foot?
Correct.
That's, that would be acceptable.
All right, we'll get her.
We, we, we'd be very pleased with a four-foot fence.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ma'am, did you want to, you're raising your hand. Do you want to speak? Okay, you need to, if you're going to do that, you need to approach the microphone again. And Ms. Crimbering, I'm sorry.
Crimbering, yes. I taught school in Margate for forty-two years. I had third graders. They could climb a four-foot fence. I'm really concerned that there's a huge pool next to us with just a four-foot fence. One could climb on top of another and they'd be in the pool in a minute. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Public portion is closed. Anyone else from the board? Does anyone want to make a motion? Excuse me? Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Now, any, any more board discussion about some of the things that were brought up either by the public or by the applicant?
Just a comment, like.
Give me this.
I know, just for the other board members and just to get it out there for the public as well, I know mentioned by Clem is that we're setting a bad precedent, but we need to evaluate each application on a case-by-case basis. We apply the law the same way each time, but the facts are different. So I don't know which way either, way anyone's thinking regardless. Apply it on case-by-case. Don't worry about what the next one or the next one, we'll apply the law properly again, but apply it to this case with these facts is my only suggestion.
It encourages people. It's right.
I don't know what it does, but that's our duty is my belief.
Okay. But then they come to us and we say yes or no?
And I'm not saying I'm going either way, but I'm just saying, be comfortable.
I think if you listen to the testimony, that the pool as proposed wouldn't fit. He had to change the pool where it couldn't go in.
It would be smaller.
Lot smaller.
Okay, so it's smaller.
Tom, you'd still be here for the variance for the fence. The pool's legal right where it's at. It's the fence that's the problem, not the pool. Jimmy could sign off on that pool, but he can't sign off on that fence.
Mike, is it legal if it's not built according to plan?
No, it's not. No. I totally agree with you there. You know, the pool companies, I don't know why they're not here trying to, you know, back you up.
They create the problem.
Yeah, I mean, why are you paying all this when they goofed? I'm in the contracting business. If I did something wrong, we wouldn't be here. I resolved the problem.
You, you may speak, Mr. Sabat.
The reason I came back with people could help me because when I left here, I said I wanted to be reasonable. I want to be safe. I'm a doctor. There's no way I want anyone's life jeopardized. I have kids myself. I think it's important, though, a statement was made tonight of why you have a board like this and why we have variances. I don't want to create a problem. I want a resolution, and I want to be reasonable about it. I don't think, and I asked Mr. Ponzi to look at this very carefully to make sure it was safe. Not only did we change the dimensions, so the sight line, we changed the material from plastic to aluminum, which costs more. We have it, it's fenestrated, you can see through it. We talked about doing everything possible to make it visible and even talked about reducing it. As I asked you before, I'll ask you again, I need your help to make this at least reasonable for me to be able to walk around my pool. Because as a status quo, I couldn't even walk by the pool if the fence is right up to the water line, to the pool. And I just think that there should be some conclusion today that's a reasonable, I mean, a lot of money was spent on this, and these gentlemen did a lot of hard work to get us this far. I'm just asking you to be reasonable.
Would you be amenable to, just coming out four feet? Coming four feet instead of eight feet? Yeah, the, the minimum space it can come out is four feet for safety issues. So would you be amenable to that rather than the eight feet?
I'd like to get more if I could.
Right.
At least I can get, I need something where I can get a chair in there.
Okay, so you want to make, you want to be amenable to four feet?
Can we consult Mr. Ponzi just for a moment to answer that?
I'd rather him tell me about the dimensions.
Off the building. Well, four feet from the coping, yeah. You have to have, you have to have four feet, right?
Right.
Building code?
But I'm, I'm wondering that the type of fence he's speaking about may not be a code-approved fence. You might have to go with a thicker or thin, less space between the spindles. You might have to go with a thicker or thin, less space between the spindles. So you can't climb up it like Mrs. Adams said. So we just, it'd still be open, but they need to, has to be no more than an inch and three-quarters between spacing and spindles.
Okay.
But you'll be able to see through it. I just want to make sure that they're okay with that.
How about?
Okay, well, you got, you got it.
One at a time, please. How about if you were to do six foot?
Okay, let's hold on.
But only four feet out.
Roger's going to approve.
Go ahead.
Mr. Gallantino, you have a question? Did you have a question?
Well, let him speak and then we'll go from there.
We can scale back the distance from the encroachment into the front yard. Oh, I apologize. We can scale back the encroachment from the front yard. Four feet appears to be rather drastic to us, but we can comfortably agree to six.
Okay.
We can comfortably agree to six and we think that, we think that that eliminates all concern about sightlines.
Okay. Okay, so then, that's it, right? We're just going to, you're going to give the, we're going to say, you're agreeing to six feet and are we going with the four foot or the six foot height?
Well, they said they would do a four foot, but, I mean, I know there's a couple of board members that wanted it. I didn't hear from all the board members at all because that is another variance that's going to be required because six feet's required.
I would think five feet would be a better, instead of six and four, well, it's safety.
How about show of hands?
All right.
Want to call show of hands for four or show of hands for five? What do you guys want to do?
Sure.
All right, call it.
Okay, anyone, anyone that, show of hands.
So you want three variances instead of two?
Yes.
As to the fence height, show of hands as to four feet approval. Jim Gallantino. How about five feet approval? Four. And how about the required six feet?
Let the record just show that only three people voted and all showed hands. Oh, okay.
A couple of people didn't show hands at all, I understand.
Okay, so what are, so what are we, where are we at now?
Well, it's up to the applicant to make an applicant, you know, what type of fence they want to request as part of the application. There's four feet, five feet, or six feet, and we tried to give you a show of hands. I don't know if that helped you much, but.
We.
Hold on, people in the public, we'll get to you.
Sure. So we're comfortable abiding the court's decision on the height of the fence. We think five feet would be perfectly appropriate.
Okay. Sorry, you want to come back up? You've already been sworn in? Just your name for the record?
Louis Fellman.
Thank you.
I'm just sitting here and I'm trying to visualize what is happening. So they're in their driveway, in the car, and they can see through the fence, correct? But if you can visualize these slats, whatever you call these poles, at that angle, it's going to be, it's going to look solid. It's not going to be, from that angle, visualize coming out of the driveway and looking this way, they still won't be able to see. Those will, from an optical illusion, they'll all look solid, those posts of the fence. No matter how far apart they are, black, the black fence is going to look solid from an optical view. Any optician would tell you that.
Great, thank you.
I have a question for Arthur.
All right. Is anybody else? Okay, sorry.
The driveway is two cars wide, correct?
Yes.
If the car, if there's two cars there and the car on the long porch side wants to back out, what's the driver looking at? The fence or the car next to it?
He's looking at the other vehicle for the first two-thirds of the driveway.
Right.
Assuming that the car to the easterly side was parked all the way at the head of the spot where the home is.
So by the time you clear that car.
Yeah, we'll all clear the fence.
Correct.
Correct. We agreed to move the fence back, I believe, what, four feet, right? Move it back. Move the fence back. Four feet from there.
On this plan, it would be four feet closer to the line because it's six feet.
Okay, okay.
That's correct.
All right, so we're going to read the conditions now and then we're going to take.
All right, the applicants made an application for C variance relief. Yes, you may, come on up, ma'am.
Hi.
Can you, can you raise, motion open to public again?
A second.
Okay, ma'am, what, your name and address, please?
Pamela Grupo, 8606 Winchester. I'm a property manager for 600 units. I just put a fence in for a 70 by 45-foot pool. The spindles cannot be as wide as you referred to on the microphone. Just so that you're clear, the spindles can only be a little less than two inches for a pool where I am in Washington Township. Now, I don't know what the ordinance is here, but it's so that children can't put their heads through them, arms through them, climbing. So there's very strict ordinances where I was from. So that you, if you have a pool that, if you have a fence and you have a two-inch, you know, spoke and in-between, you can't really see through it. We can't even see the pool when we drive by the pool at the property.
We already.
I just wanted to.
We already discussed that.
Okay, so I just want.
We were discussing the spindles spacing.
Okay.
I already brought that up. I just want to make sure we weren't, you didn't think we're approving a four in space. We do realize the spacing needs to be done a certain way.
Okay.
The spacing has to comply with the ordinance, correct?
Pardon me?
Spacing has to comply with the, right. And the code, I'm sorry. All right, anyone else from the public before I? Sorry. I don't swear yet, just your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Ron Grupo, I live at 8606 Winchester.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grupo.
Thanks. I don't, this may be unusual, I don't know, but I want to say that I think that Mr. Mr. Sabat had been very accommodating to the neighborhood. I can't speak for the next-door neighbors because I don't live next door, but I support and appreciate that they're willing to make the concessions that they're going to make. And Mr. Miller is here and I think they've done a nice job of accommodating themselves. I understand it's a difficult situation and I just wanted to voice publicly that I support, you know, the changes that they've been willing to make. And I think it's, you know, much, much better. It's 11 feet further back from the sidewalk than it was proposed and it's not solid. So I just wanted to let it be known that as a neighbor, I appreciate the concessions.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public that wants to be heard? If not, motion to close public portion?
A second.
It's closed. The applicants made an application for approval of the certain plans that they have. They've amended the plans from the last application. Plans are still, the application's still going to require variances, they're going to be C variances. One is for the, the pool fence. It's not permitted to be in the front yard, they're proposing it to be in the front yard. And they're proposing, as amended tonight, that it be six feet out from the corner, back corner of the property or whatever corner of the property it is on Winchester Avenue. I'm sorry.
Corner of the house.
Corner of the house. Also, part of their plan also actually asks for a pool equipment setback. I know that's going to be in the garage. The requirement's 10 feet. The garage wall is about one foot from the side property line, so it is a bit greater than one foot is the proposed. The fence height requirement is six feet because of the pool. The applicant has amended it to five feet. Conditions of approval are the landscaping shall be no greater than 18 inches in height in front of the fence. And the fence is required as part of the condition to be the black iron fence. It has to conform with the code and it will be a five-foot fence for the plans. So I need a motion and a.
Mr. Flurgman, before you continue, I think that we had said that there would be no landscaping all the way to the sidewalk higher than 18, not just the fence.
Oh, okay, no landscaping.
So they can't block any of the neighbor's view to the sidewalk.
Understood. Also, a condition is that the landscaping cannot be on the side yard except in front of the fence, is that correct?
Okay.
I make a motion?
Just for clarity, can we put the 18-inch height limitation on that as well? For that, for that landscaping that would extend?
Yes.
We're not saying they can't plant anything, we're just saying we can't plant beyond the 18 inches.
18 inches.
Thank you.
Same, same condition, thank you. Okay, but those amendments, I need a motion for those variances and approval. Please state your reasons on the record.
I make a motion and.
Roll call.
Tom Collins.
Awful lot of discussion about a unfortunate situation because of a corner property. I was very leery of this throughout most of the case until Mr. Ponzio made the great presentation about the landscaping. And I think this board getting the opportunity to keep, because we deny them tonight, they could just be mean and put in 18-foot-high arborvitae's all the way to the sidewalk on the property line and we can't do anything about it. And you'd never, you wouldn't see sunlight. So I think considering everything that went, that's happened, I know the pool guy that you used, I used him, I got screwed. You're getting screwed, sorry, but it's true. I feel for you. I think that what you've done has been the best, you've even won over one of your neighbors. I think that under the circumstances and with the amendments, that I don't think that this would really cause any harm or detriment to either you or to the neighborhood by approving it. Side vote, yes.
Clem Moeslewski.
Well, we spent a lot of time here tonight trying to condone an apparently intentional error on the part of the cool, cool contractor. And as Mike had mentioned, contractor should certainly be responsible for his acts. That pool ought to be reconstructed to conform to the filed plans. That being said, I can't think of any valid reason under the land use law to grant any variances related to it. I vote no.
Mike Cristaldi.
It's probably one of the tougher ones we've ever had. They're bending over backwards to do anything that we want. I am so against the fence in the front yard. I'm tired of them coming in here, actually. But what they've given up for it and seeing through it and the landscape down, you could have a mean neighbor and plant those plants like Tom said. So given what they've done, what they've given up, I vote yes.
Margaret Cooper, not to.
I agree with the other board members in that this has been, this is an unfortunate situation for neighbors as well as the owner of the property. Mr. Ponzio gave a good reason why we shouldn't lock ourselves into the situation. I know we've reduced it to five foot and likewise, six. I know some of the neighbors have been satisfied with that. I think we've resolved some of the safety issues. And I know that the site triangle has been reduced even further. I vote in favor of the application.
Jim Gallantino.
It's a tough case. I mean, I don't like the fact that the pools are almost, I call them the shoe horn, shoe-in, shoehorn pools. It's like they just come in and they shoehorn them, but I think the Shabats came to the table with a lot of concessions. And I don't know if we would ever be able to get the neighbors to be okay with the way that the property's going to sit after the fence is in. But I do know those telephone pools are an obstruction to pulling out of Mrs. Adams' driveway. But I don't want to see 18-foot arborvitae's in the front yard either, which would be jail. So I have to, I think that was the killer for me, so I'm going to have to say yes on that.
Craig Pomisano.
Mr. Ponzio's statements were well-put and true. I think that like Jim Gallantino says, the pool is really shoehorned in there. There's one side of the house where the pool's up against the house, you can't walk on that side, on that side of the house. It's just too tight. And the pool company making a mistake like they did, you wouldn't need to come here for six feet. You maybe need three feet with three feet extra on the pool if it was built right. I have to agree with Mr. Waslewski. And the sightline is changed with the fence on Winchester Avenue. I have to vote no on this, I'm sorry.
Mike Richman.
After listening to the neighbors and the testimony, I really think it's a neighborhood situation and obviously the neighbors aren't happy. I really didn't hear any positive things coming out of the neighbors. So I don't really see how that's going to be a plus for the neighborhood granting the variance, so I'm going to vote no.
Application passes four to three.
Okay. We're just going to take a quick five-minute break.
Have we taken a break?
Yeah, 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 okay.
Oh, okay. Here we go.
Clem, we have too many cases for this.
Okay, here we go. Our next case is Kurt Tigler, 50 Seaside Court, blocks 610.05, lot 8 in the S-40 district to grant a C variance for six-foot fence and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and no defying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members. Another fence, another lengthy report. My report is dated March 29th, 2017. Some background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances at the City of Margate in order to construct a new six-foot-high fence within the rear yard. No pour spa is proposed. So the variances required are fence, a C variance for fence height, whereas five-foot-high fences are the maximum permitted without a pour spa and a fence height of six foot is being proposed. No waivers have been requested and if they have been, I would recommend granting them. My comments as follows, the existing fences in the rear yards of other properties are apparently six-foot in height. Mr. Tigler has been very cooperative throughout the process and plans on moving into the house as a full-time resident. And that concludes my lengthy report.
Okay.
Raise your hand, thank you.
Kurt Tigler, 50 Seaside Court.
Thank you. Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
I'm seeking a six-foot fence behind our property, just on the back of the property, along the property line. As Mr. McLaren referred, one of my neighbors has a six-foot fence. Actually, the neighbor behind me has a two-foot elevated deck with a five-foot fence mounted to it as well. So we were looking to have equal amount of privacy across the back. We're not having any gates, we don't have any pets, and right now we don't have any proposed hot tubs or pools.
Okay. So what, the reason you're building, you want to build a six-foot fence is for privacy?
Across the back of the property, yes.
Are the people behind you, can they, if they're on their deck, can they see over you or do you hear like noise or?
Well, we're very close, if you're familiar with that, the interlude back there, we're pretty close to one another. Can they see over? Absolutely. Yeah, they have a two-foot elevated deck, so when they walk out their sliding glass door, they can, they can see what I'm growing.
Okay, so they have a five-foot fence, but they have a two-foot deck, so that basically it's like three foot? Is that what you're saying?
No, their total elevation would be seven.
Okay.
So when they're standing on their two-foot deck.
Right.
They would be able to see, yeah. That's not really my biggest concern.
Right.
They have two dogs, one's a pit bull. And prior, you know, to applying for this, last summer, we couldn't even sit out back because what's there now is a four-foot picket fence.
Right.
The privacy's more for the dog.
Okay.
Not mine.
Right.
Is your fence in place now?
It is.
It's six foot on one side and then it goes up to seven foot, is that correct?
Correct, there's lattice on top of it.
Lattice work brings it up to seven feet high, correct?
Correct, correct, which was equal to what they had. I mean, we're willing to take the lattice down, I mean, especially if they take their fence down.
Does everybody view that fence?
What was originally proposed to me...
Six-foot with another foot of lattice.
That's correct, that's correct.
And it makes it seven-foot.
Yeah, that's correct. And like the applicant earlier, I hired a contractor, I didn't do it myself. The contractor told me that he was going to hinge the lattice, and that's what he proposed. Yes, he said, "Well hinge the lattice, it won't be permanent." I said, "Okay, sounds like a good idea." At the moment, it is not hinged, he will hinge it if... Yeah, so you drop the lattice down.
You're asking for approval for a fence that's already there, not to build a new one?
Correct, correct.
And you're asking for us to approve it as-is, or minus a foot?
Six-foot fence.
You're saying six-foot fence, but it's seven behind your house.
Correct, we're going to make it a six-foot fence.
Oh, you're going to take the lattice down?
Yeah, absolutely.
You're going to reduce it down to a six-foot, get rid of that top?
Good.
Not hinge it, not, just get rid of it?
That's correct.
Okay.
It runs along the back of the property line, it won't be any further?
Just on the property line.
What is there existing will just be brought down a foot?
Correct, correct.
And there are no plans to come down the side of the house at all?
Not at this time, although we did submit plans for future landscaping that would require fence, probably a variance because if we put a hot tub on the side, but at this moment, no, nothing.
And your six-foot fence in the back would then be equal with your neighbor?
No.
The lattice, Craig, or is it...
No, it would be a foot lower.
It would be a foot lower than the neighbor?
That's correct.
Right, that's what I thought.
Anybody else on the board have any questions, comments? No? Anyone from the public like to speak? Okay, public portion's closed. Is there any... No?
The lattice coming down was the condition?
Yeah, the lattice just being removed would be a condition to get the six feet. Would it be a variance for fence height, required, you know, the permitted's five feet, proposed is six feet. It's going to run on, six feet on the back property line. One of the conditions is that, obviously, the lattice will be removed to make it conforming to the six-foot if it's approved. And I don't think there's any other conditions of course. So we need a motion and the affirmative for those, for that one variance and those conditions.
I'll read that motion.
A second.
Tom Collins?
Under the circumstances, I think the request is de minimis. You're really not changing site views for your neighbor, bringing yourself more into code with what we're doing, so I find no negative impacts on the neighborhood, and I vote for it.
Clem Mosleski?
Since the fence is already there and it's going to be lower than the neighbor's, I don't see whether there's going to be any problem relative to the adjacent properties. As far as its view from the street, that's non-existent, so, vote yes.
Mike Cristaldi?
I'm in agreement with Clem, I vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
I agree with Mr. Mosleski as well. There's no negative impact to the neighbors. There is six-foot existing, and the owner does have plans to put a hot tub in the rear yard, so I vote in favor of the application.
Jim Gallantino?
Just a second, next time you do anything, just give me a call, I'll tell you if you need whatever, a building permit.
Agreed.
I agree with Pinky, I agree with Mike, and I agree with Clem, and I agree with Tom, and I don't see any problem with this variance, thank you.
Craig Pomisano?
I agree with the other board members, I approve the variance.
Mike Richman?
Yeah, I don't see any negative effect on the neighborhood, none of the neighbors come out to complain, so I'm going to vote yes.
Application passes seven to nothing. Mr. Tigler, please come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, our next case is Joseph and Abby Di Stefano, 401 North Nassau Avenue, block 614, lot 17, in the S-40 district to grant C variances for side and combined yard setback and a driveway not parallel with Jerome Avenue and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied.
Good evening, Brian Callahan of the Law Firm Callahan, I'll go to Roger.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Board Members, thank you, Board Chairman. My report was dated February 20th, 2017, and revised March 30th, 2017. Background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances at the City of Margate in order to renovate and construct in addition that would require certain variances from the planning board. Some variances being requested are due to vertical expansion of existing non-conformities. In addition, a variance is being requested to construct a driveway from Fremont Avenue, which is not permitted by ordinance. My zoning chart is included in the, my report. Just want to highlight some of the documents, I received another cover letter from Attorney Brian Callahan this week for my request for a 200-foot setback survey of the Nassau Avenue. So let's go through the variances required. Front yard setback for the house on Nassau Avenue, whereas 16.66 feet is a prevailing setback and 4.62 feet is proposed. The architect, Mark Petrella, will clarify and confirm some of these setbacks, it was unclear. Minimum side yard setback, whereas 10 feet is required minimum, and seven feet, and 7.8 feet is proposed and existing. Combined side yard, whereas 22 feet is required combined side yards, and 14.8 feet is proposed and existing. Driveway location, whereas the driveways are required to be located off side streets, streets parallel with Jerome Avenue, and one is not proposed. My comments are that the building is being renovated to comply with FEMA requirements, which is a positive thing for the city and the applicant. Existing structures remain and be expanded vertically, thereby driving the variances. All landscape in a street tree requirement should be a condition of any approval. Applicants shall verify portion building setback requirements and provide testimony that the porches and buildings meet these required prevailing setbacks, which is generated the letter from Mr. Callahan in the 200-foot report. As for the driveway on Jerome, or Fremont Avenue, the idea is to keep the driveways off of main roads. I would not consider Fremont Avenue at this location to be a main road, so that variance could be easily granted, is in my opinion. I include efforts shall be taken to preserve the mature trees on the site. And that basically concludes my report, and the testimony will give merit to the case.
Good evening, Brian Callahan of the Law Firm Callahan Thompson Thompson. On behalf of Joe and Abby Di Stefano, you've heard Roger's report, let me call Abby Di Stefano first, give you a little idea of how long she's lived there and why they're intending to raise the house. The house raising is part of a Sandy Storm Damage REM program. They were at elevation six, as you know, as we go through it, they're going to raise it up to elevation 15 and put the other story on top of it. But let her walk you through a little bit with the kids and everything else. Abby?
Mr. Stefano, could you raise your right hand, please?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and your current address, Mr. Stefano?
401 North Nassau.
Thank you.
Abby, how long have you owned it?
We bought the house in 2009.
Suffered some Sandy Storm damage?
We did, we suffered, one room took water up to about knee-thigh high.
Give the board a little background of why we decided to stay put.
So, my husband and I bought the house in 2009 when we got married. Since then, we've had two children. We also took water during Hurricane Sandy, and we decided to raise it because we took water. The house, the way it currently is, is two bedrooms downstairs and one upstairs, which was fine when we had my one son, but now we have two. So currently, we're upstairs and the two kids are downstairs. Anyone who has children, it's a long night getting up. So, the new plans would have us all sleeping upstairs, and it would allow for, I'm a nurse and I do work from home part-time too. It would allow for me to have an office in our house and then a playroom for the kids. And then the sandy freezing would allow us to have some storage, so...
Storage is also a plus, I mean bicycles, beach chairs.
We live here all year round, we need bikes, trucks, toy trucks, all that stuff to be stored somewhere, which we currently don't have anything, so...
So you decided to stay put in Margate, raise the family in Margate?
We do, we love Nassau Avenue, we love our street, we love our home, it's just we've outgrown it. So, that's why a lot of people have asked why we didn't knock it down and start over, we love this house.
Life long residence?
Yep, we, my husband and I both grew up here, and we're excited to have our family here.
Any questions for Abby before I move on to the architect? Mark? Go ahead.
Mark, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name and business address?
Mark Petrella, 1020 Atlantic Avenue, Atlantic City. I'm a principal with SOSH Architects.
Thank you.
Mr. Callahan? Do I need to go through any additional qualifications, license in the state of New Jersey?
At least that we need.
Yes, licensed architect, state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mark, why don't you walk me through the project, give a little idea of what the existing site plan is and then what we're preparing to do?
Certainly, I'm going to refer to, it's actually drawing A02 that was submitted in the application packet. It shows the existing conditions of the home. So, generally, it's a two-story structure, it's not a full second story, which is a reason why the desire is to expand the second floor. And as was mentioned, we want to raise this to comply with FEMA standards, but also renovate the first floor and expand the second floor. The extent of the expansion really does not exceed the existing footprint of the home.
On your fence, the downstairs bedrooms that we have labeled technically are becoming, as Abby indicated, playroom and office area. So that the living space from a bedroom count will be the three bedrooms upstairs?
That is correct, the actual proposed plan indicates five bedrooms, and the parking that's included on the site would accommodate five bedrooms. But as Abby testified today, the intent is to only utilize three as bedrooms and then office and, I guess, player den on the first floor. Referring to the second exhibit, which is drawing A01, submitted in your packet, shows the proposed conditions. Looking at the ground floor plan, as indicated, we're going to include some storage once the house is elevated, but it also allows for a garage, so a two-car garage under the structure. There is evidence that there originally was a garage on this side of the home. So the intent is to provide it with access off of Fremont Avenue. Looking at the first floor plan, the major renovation on the first floor is really to relocate the stairs. The stair is currently in the back of the kitchen. And with this renovation, the plan is to move it central to the house, so it's accessed off the main living dining space. And what that does on the second floor, it actually helps with access to the bedroom. So, the second floor plan shows the master bedroom in the back, so that's an existing space. And then we're actually expanding the second floor towards Nassau Avenue to create the two bedrooms for the children. And also in that expansion would be a new bathroom and reconfiguration of the master suite. Another part of the proposed expansion is to include a deck that is accessed off the family room at the elevated first level. That will be located over the driveway, which is on the Fremont Avenue side.
Height-wise, we're going to comply, correct? We're not asking for any height variances?
That is correct, what we're proposing, the ordinance requirement is 28 feet max from the new elevated first floor of 13 to the peak of the roof. So we are complying with that, so our peak of the roof is, will be no higher than 41 feet above mean sea level. Taking a look at the...
And the design of the house, we're not a box house, so there's plenty...
Not at all.
You're looking at that, the height, there's still plenty of open space that we haven't filled in on that envelope.
That is correct. So, the plan with raising the roof, we're basically creating a primary roofline gable with saddlebag dormers. We think it's a drastic improvement to the existing condition, one we're actually eliminating a non-conforming roof configuration. Because right now, the existing roof is practically a flat roof at the second level. So what we're proposing is a 12-on-12 main gable pitch that runs from Nassau Avenue to the rear of the house. And then off of that will be saddlebag shed dormers, which those dormers also comply with the minimum pitch of 512.
Talk a little bit about the variances, and I'll call Mr. Barnhart up to give us some variance relief information.
As Roger mentioned in his report, there should be some clarification on the setback variances. And what I like to do is bring up the next exhibit, which is Ponzio's variance or setback plan that was prepared indicating front yard setbacks for both porches and the building. Looking at Roger's report, just wanted to clarify the front yard Fremont Avenue setback. On his chart, he does not indicate a number for the existing setback, that is actually 9.86 feet, which is here. And that is the same proposed condition, as we do not propose to expand the footprint on that side. On his chart, it actually indicates it's 12 feet proposed. So that should be 9.86 feet. Front yard house on North Nassau Avenue, the required minimum is 16.66 feet based on the average, based on the analysis that Ponzio had prepared. The existing off of Nassau Avenue is 14.62 feet, and that is measured from the property line to the existing first floor corner. What is proposed, Roger indicates the proposed is 14.62 feet, but that is incorrect. What we're proposing is to expand the second floor closer to Nassau Avenue, basically to match the line of the existing porch. So, the proposal would be the second floor over the first floor deck to be 12.03 feet.
When your other, when your A exhibit, where it talks about the elevation, we're really specifically talking about this expansion that really covers the existing front porch at that level is what we're talking about. So that we have that architectural feature covering up that front porch.
Right, we think it's important to extend, we're creating this new main gable of the house that runs from front to back, so we think it's important to bring that forward of the existing front wall and allows the columns to come down to the floor of that front porch.
It also gives you a decent bedroom to raise the children in, in the sense of you have a boy and a girl growing up there, so they're not in jail cells or anything like that, they have the ability.
That is correct.
Mr. Petrella, could you just give me the date of the plan you're referring to? It's the front, it's the front porch, I'm sorry, the front porch...
This is the drawing that Ponzio prepared.
For the front yard averages?
Yes, it's the 200-foot neighborhood setback survey dated 3/21/17, sheet number one.
Thank you. And what was the average for the front yard on Fremont Avenue?
Average for the front yard...
On Fremont?
For the house is 8.93 feet.
Okay.
And we are at 9.86 feet, existing with no proposed change.
Thank you.
Combined side yards?
Yes, looking at Roger's chart, it looks like combined side yards, the requirement is 22 feet. Existing is 14.8 feet, and there's no proposed change. Minimum side yard is 10 feet, and the existing conditions are 7 feet and 7.8 feet, again, no proposed change. And then, I guess, the last variance would be the driveway location. And I agree with... And I agree with Roger's comments that I believe that the intent of the requirement is to limit them on to the streets generally parallel to Jerome Avenue, is that, you know, the alternative would be on a major arterial street. And of course, Fremont Avenue is not.
Also, one of the conditions that Roger had indicated that our clients have accepted, the existing driveway would be then, A, curb cut would be closed up, concrete would be removed and replaced with landscaping. So once again, Nassau Avenue then would not have a curb cut and would have the additional landscaping put in.
That is correct. If that's, if that what the applicant would choose to do. But currently, the plan complies with coverage with that pavement in. And if that driveway were to be removed, we would still comply with onsite parking, off-street parking.
Is the driveway just going to stay or leave?
No, the driveway on Nassau, curb cuts being finished off to be replaced, and the concrete's coming out and landscaping's going in.
So the driveway won't be there?
The driveway will not be there on a final plan. That's, you know, that's, once again, now becomes the new part of the house. We're now able to put the garage on the other side. So we're now taking a car that's visible, put it back in the garage, and we now have the adequate storage to raise the family with. That was the intent. Let me just call Mr. Barnhart real quick to walk you through positive and negative, and we'll get out of your way.
John, can you raise your right hand quickly? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
John, let's talk a little bit about positives and negatives on the project.
Sure. The first positive is that we're not asking for offense variance. So Mr. Petrella put us, walked us through the requests that we're, that the department are asking for this evening. I'm just going to kind of summarize from a planning perspective. We have really two key elements here. I think Mr. Petrella has done a tremendous job to create a desirable visual environment, which is a purpose of land use law that is advanced with this application. You have a structure that is kind of outdated for the community and for this neighborhood. There are a lot of homes in this area that are absolutely beautiful, been renovated, things. And this, Mr. Petrella, with his design, has, is taking this site to the next level, we think, with regard to aesthetics and architecture. So we believe that that purpose of zoning is advanced. I think also, very importantly, we are removing a nonconformity with regard to elevation. This is a sandy damaged home. The project will elevate the building to become completely compliant with regard to all of the flood damage prevention ordinance requirements at the state and federal level as well. So that is, again, a purpose of zoning that is advanced with the application. With regard to the negative criteria, is there a substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance? Mr. Petrella has, again, designed a building that really falls within the confines of what's been there for many, many years. He's utilized the setbacks. He's not asking to go much closer on the front. He's not, he's actually holding the side yard setbacks exactly where they are today. So we don't see a negative impact with regard to the public good. And with regard to a negative impact to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, again, I would suggest that we're actually making this a more compliant site with the improvements that are proposed. So I think that the C variances are clearly granted under the C2 criteria, or able to be granted under the C2 criteria.
I don't have any other questions. I would have opened it up to the board.
John, can I ask you a question? I know you're a magician with a pencil. How did you make the lot go from 50 feet to 60 feet?
Where's that?
Right here. Lot width, 50 feet, proposed 60 feet.
Anybody else from the board? No? Okay. Anyone from the public? Okay, public portion's closed. Is there any other conditions?
Are we amending that so the plan shows?
Yes. Also, just for the record, I told him I would put on the record, Colin Bell, who's one of the neighbors next door, indicated that he is in favor of it, didn't have a chance to be here tonight. I told him I would place it on the record. I know the board gives it very little weight since he's not here to be cross-examined. Judge it accordingly.
Okay, so just one clarification. The front yard principal structure on North Nassau Avenue, that, the proposal is now 12.03 feet?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the only change?
Correct.
Okay. Because the other doesn't need variance, I know that. And, okay. All right, so at this point in time, the applicant has made an application for C variance relief. The, this is a house raising incurred from Hurricane Sandy or Superstorm Sandy. The variances are front yard principal structure on North Nassau Avenue. The required minimum 16.66 feet. The proposed is 12.03 feet. There's two variances that are necessitated by the vertical expansion, which are minimum side yard and combined side yard. They're not requesting to increase that at all. They're just raising the structure vertically. And the last variance is for driveway location, which is, it's required to be on a side street. What exists now, it's on Nassau Avenue, which is conforming. The proposal is to make the driveway on Fremont Avenue, which would require variance. And Roger, any other conditions other than those? And Brian, all the conditions in the report are okay?
Yes, Roger had indicated that street trees should be added and not take down trees on site, and we're doing that. So the conditions that Roger wrote in his report are acceptable to us.
Okay, thank you. So I need a motion, the affirmative with those.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Who's second?
Me.
Tom Collins?
Nice job on this. I like what you're doing. I would expect Mark not to design anything that wouldn't conform to our future master plan of Margate. I give you a lot of accolades. I think that you're staying here after Sandy, putting your kids in the school system, raising your children. That all counts in Margate. You're local, you're grounded, you want to take a house and not just tear it down and throw it away. You want to invest back in the Margate. I see no negative impacts on the neighborhood. I think everything you've done has been excellent. The designs are excellent. And I wish you a lot of luck, and I vote in favor.
Clem Moslaski?
Yeah, we have another Sandy-generated project here. And I think it's met the requirements very, very well. It's going to be a good fit for the neighborhood, both in its size, its massing, and the street elevations. Both streets have good order to them, something we don't see very often. As far as the curb cut is concerned on Fremont, I lived around the corner from there for 42 years, and Fremont's almost a dead street. There's no problem at all there. I vote in favor.
Mike Cristaldi?
In agreement with Clem, again, I call him Sandy victims, though. It's a shame that you went through that. And I know what you're fighting with if you're working with him. So my heart goes out to you for that, and I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalte?
I also agree with Clem. The design is beautiful. It's certainly an aesthetic improvement to what is there. It's FEMA compliant, which Jimmy likes as well. There are no negative impacts. We're happy to have you here as full-time residents, and I vote in favor of the application.
Jim Gallantino?
Where's the bedrooms for you in Berzey, Howard? First, second floor? That's where the golf clubs are. I see that. But Brian, you taking golfing? Better.
Can't get them out there anymore with the bad back.
I don't see any problem with this. I'm in love with the house, and I think Mark did a nice job with the architectural. Also, you could have built a six-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath with a seasonal, another seasonal margation, who would have just probably lived there about, you know, two months out of the year. So I think this is really a beautiful job, and good luck, Abby, to Joe. I approve it.
Craig Pomisano?
The other board member said it all. Staying in Margate is a good thing. Raising a house is not an easy project. It's a lot of pre-existing conditions with the setbacks. And the driveway, I see no problem with the driveway on Fremont Avenue. I approve it.
Mike Kretschman?
I think the house is a real improvement to the neighborhood. I think it's an enhancement to the neighborhood, and there was no neighbors who thought otherwise, so I'm going to vote yes.
Application passes seven to nothing. Brian, will you come sign, please?
Okay. That's it?
Can we see what else?
Okay, our next case is Bruce Horn, 118 North Kenyon Avenue, block 313.02. Lot 14 in the S30 district to grant a C variance for front yard, porch setback, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied.
For the record, Mr. Patterson is present for this application on?
Thank you, board members. Board Chairman, my report is dated March 29th, 2017, in regard to Bruce Horn at 118 North Kenyon Avenue. Background is the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to reconstruct an existing first-floor porch. The existing porch is non-compliant, and the proposed porch will increase the front yard setback, will still be non-compliant. Meaning it's being pushed back, but it's being wider, but it's still not complying with the required setback. The minimum side yard will not change for the house, but will be non-compliant for the porch as being proposed. Front yard landscaping will further be reduced and require an additional variance. A minimum roof pitch may require a variance as required for the porch roof, although it may be viewed as a canopy, which does not require a variance. My zoning chart is for your review in my report. Variance is required. Front yard setback for the porch, whereas prevailing setback is 16.4 feet and 7.62 feet is proposed. The variance is 8.78 feet. Side yard setback for the porch, whereas the required setback is 5 feet and 4.2 feet is proposed. Front yard landscaping, whereas the front, whereas the required percentage is 60% and 24% is proposed. See comments. Minimum roof pitch, this is up for debate, whereas 5-on-12 is required minimum and 2.5-on-12 is proposed. The roof covers a porch, like I said, I would view it as a canopy more than a roof, and the variance may not be required on this. My commentary is follows. The front yard setback for the porch is an improvement from the existing setback of 6.02 feet. The setback actually increases by 1.6 feet. The side yard setback variance is for the proposed porch enlargement, which is a variance of .08 feet, or about 10 inches. Front yard landscaping is proposed to be reduced due to the porch expansion. However, the entire rear concrete patio is being removed and planted with shrubs and grass, so there is a net increase in landscaped area for the entire property. The proposed roof is replacing an awning, so the roof may be viewed as a canopy or wooden awning. If the roof or canopy were to comply, then it would be, it would bury the second-floor windows. Additional landscaping, including street trees, are proposed as part of this application as well. My recommendations are in my report, and I leave it up to the applicant to provide testimony in support of his application.
Once again, good evening. Brian Callahan of the law firm Callahan-Thompson Thompson on the application. Mr. Horn could not be with us this evening. He is down in Florida. It's his mother's 100th birthday.
Wow. Congratulations.
Yes. That's myself and Pete Weiss. As the application indicated, the purpose is to take down what's a dilapidated porch right now, build a new porch across the front of the building. We're pulling it back an additional foot and a half, so, you know, a little further back, but it goes across. We do need, so we do need a front yard variance. The side yard variance of the 10 inches is really generated because there's a window there. So if we moved the porch in 10 inches, we really got to wind up reframing the window and doing everything for 10 inches. Landscaping, as Roger indicated, we are losing some landscaping in the front yard. We're ripping out all the concrete and everything else in the backyard to really increase the net. We are adding street trees as part of the application in the front yard, so we're hoping that that does it. The roof pitch, we really hadn't even looked at until we received Roger's report. We do view it as a canopy, so... But let me have Pete Weiss quickly walk you through the project, and then if you have any questions, you can jump in.
Thanks, Pete. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and your name and business address, please?
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
Thank you.
Do I need to go through Mr. Weiss's qualifications? Have you testified enough before your board that we're okay?
He's fine, just as long as he's a registered, that he's a licensed architect.
Pete, why don't you walk him through and give him an idea of what we're doing with the project?
The existing building is a one-and-a-half-story structure. It was, my guess, built in the 50s. The existing porch currently is concrete. It extends from the left side of the building, a little more than halfway across, the front door being basically in the middle, not quite. What we'd like to do is demolish existing porch, build a new porch, which will extend almost side to side. We're pulling it in about 14 inches on either side. So that'll gain a little bit of space on the right side. We're giving up a little bit of space on the left and the front by pulling it back, creating a little bit more space in here. But so there's some improvement in, gain in square footage for the porch. But this was also motivated by aesthetics, because the owner wished to extend a roof entirely across the front of the building and redo the whole building. He's going to re-side the building and improve it aesthetically, because he plans to move down here and start living down here permanently. So this was as much motivated by aesthetics and the appearance from the street as it was by gaining a little bit of extra porch space. The backyard currently is completely concrete, so all this green stuff that's on the drawing isn't there right now. So all that's, you know, reduces the pervious coverage, increases the pervious, no, reduces the pervious coverage, sorry. So that'll be landscape, grass, shrubs. In the front, we're going to add a lot more shrubs than what's there now. And we also propose two street trees, which are escaping in the front.
From a variance point of view, positively, we're going to add, well, what you increase as an architect, some aesthetic enhancement to the property, brings it more compatible in the sense of, from a street view, it's an aesthetic enhancement.
Yes.
Variance relief. We're blocking anyone's light air, open space?
Well, like I said, no. Like I said, we're going to be pulling the porch back further from the street, so that actually opens up to light and air along the street.
Do you see any type of a negative impact to the character of the neighborhood or a negative impact on the zoning plan? Roof-wise, do you think it needs a variance, or do you think really it is, as Roger indicated, a canopy over top of the existing porch?
Created a few emails about this. The wording in the ordinance, well, if I go back to more than a year ago when Roger Rubin was here, we always interpreted that section of the ordinance as meaning roofs above the first-floor level, which means the second or third floor, not the first floor. And if I can go into that a little bit, I guess. I think that the, when the last ordinance was passed, they created a maximum height, and then they created, created a minimum roof pitch. And the theory was that that would control, help control volume or mass of the building, because it, you know, starts to bring the sides down. That doesn't really make sense when you're talking about a one-story building, because to make the roof comply, you'd have to raise it up higher, which increases the mass. So that's, that's my thinking on it.
So in your case, you don't think we need a variance?
No.
I don't have any other questions of Mr. Weiss. I would open up to the board.
Anyone from the board? Okay. Anyone from the public like to speak? Okay, public portion's closed. Is there any, anything you need to say?
Roger, was the street trees a condition, or is that part of your report?
It's actually, he shows street trees, and I actually would recommend that the street trees be placed behind the sidewalk to avoid conflicts with the utilities.
Okay.
If the planting strip is too narrow, it's not good for the trees or the sidewalk.
All right, thank you.
That's been done?
Yes.
That's it?
I'll make a vote.
I'll second.
Well, let me, I'm sorry, I was writing. I wanted to just make sure that it's on the record what the variances are. Front yard for porch, the requirement is 16.4 feet, the proposed is 7.62 feet. There's some existing non-conformities for the front yard building, which is part of Roger's report, that should be considered, but they are existing non-conforming. Minimum side yard, five feet. Request is 2.72 feet and 4.2 feet. The existing's 2.72 feet. Front yard landscaped area, 60% required, 24% proposed. They don't need a land, they also have an existing non-conformity for landscaped area, 35% minimum. They're increasing from the existing 8% to the proposed 27% as a justification for the front yard variance, I believe. And also the minimum roof pitch above first level, if the board considers that to be not a canopy, then it needs a variance at 2.5 over 12.
Mr. Bergman, I think the other thing that Roger had written in his report, given the conditions, we had submitted an older survey. We would be asking for a waiver of having to provide a new up-to-date survey based on that, so...
We also, we'll also, as part of your vote, vote on that waiver.
Thank you.
I would recommend waiving that requirement as the site has not changed in 50 years.
Okay. Now that's it?
That's it.
Can we get a motion?
Are we not voting on the variance for the roof?
No, we are.
If we consider a roof non-conforming...
Well, we're...
My interpretation is different than Peter's, but the argument's the same, that it's really, it's really not a roof.
Well, that's why I read it. I figured that's what they want.
Let's vote on the roof. Let's consider that a variance.
Because if it is, then, right, if it's not a canopy, then you can vote on that.
Right.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second and...
Make a motion? Tom?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Tom Collins?
This is pretty simple compared to fences. I see no negative impacts. I think it does adhere to the C1 and C2 criteria. I think it's a positive for the neighborhood. Aesthetically, it's going to be a major improvement and we're keeping a nice house and a regular family in Margate, so I vote yes.
Clem Muszaski?
As an aside, I agree with Pete that there's no variance required for that, the roof over the front porch. It's really nice to see one of our older, I'll call it bungalows, being kept and updated and not being torn down for another five-bedroom monstrosity. The variances requested are minor and compared to the visual improvement that this makes on the property, more than makes up for the might, certainly vote yes.
Rich Patterson?
I think the fact that if the roof was compliant, it wouldn't make sense blocking out the windows, and I think it's a minor variance to ask for it. I have no trouble approving it. I see no detriments to this. It's minor modifications that are making a great improvement to the neighborhood and especially with the increase in the green of the property. Whether it's pervious or impervious, nobody knows, but it's green and the water goes through, so I vote yes.
Mike Cristaldi?
I'm going to agree with Rich and just say yes, I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalti?
It certainly is an enhancement to the property and the neighborhood. I see no negative impact to the neighbors or our plan. I like the street trees in the front of the property and I vote in favor.
Jim Gallantino?
Happy birthday to Mrs. Horn.
Yes.
Centennial.
Yeah, 100 years.
I agree with the board and I vote yes.
Mike Richman?
I think it'll be a big improvement to the neighborhood. It'll enhance the neighborhood and I vote yes.
Application passes seven to nothing. Brian, come sign please.
Okay, so the next...
They're going to need seven for a D. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Collins and Mr. Gallantino are not going to be involved in this. This, this application is going to, is everybody listening on the board? This application's going to involve a D variance, so in order for it to be approved, we're going to need a minimum of seven votes. Okay?
We need a minimum of five votes.
I'm sorry.
And Ms. Gubernalti is also refused.
Okay.
Not, so we have one, two, three, four. We have seven, eight.
Okay.
Still have eight. We only need seven, so we're good.
Okay, so it's Solomon Bay Fine Homes LLC, 7801 and 7803 Atlantic Avenue, block 105, Lot 1 and 1.01 in the CBD district to grant a D use variance and C variances for lot area, lot width, building coverage and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied.
Roger?
Thank you. Obviously, the heading, July 28 hearing is incorrect. It's tonight. My report is dated March 29th, 2017, Solomon Bay Fine Homes LLC, 7801, 7803 Atlantic Avenue. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to construct a three-unit residential townhome-style units. The site currently contains three commercial, or contains commercial units at grade with residential units above on the corner lot and just a commercial in the interior lot that will be demolished. Several C variances are required as well as a D variance is required for the use change. The use variances for residential only with no commercial use on the ground floor. Residential use is permitted on the upper floors provided that commercial space is provided downstairs. Residential use in the ground floor is not permitted. The existing two lots will be resubdivided into three non-conforming lots. The zoning schedule chart for CBD zone is listed in my report on page two, as well as the documents that were reviewed to formulate this report. Variance is required, a use variance, a residential project does not comply with the CBD zone, so a use variance is required to allow residential not being above commercial. Residential use is permitted on upper floors above commercial. To go back to the chart, additional variances are required for lot area. The required minimum is 4,000 square feet and lot areas of less than 4,000 square feet are being proposed. 1302 for proposed Lot 1, 1,324 for proposed Lot 101, and 1,302 square feet for proposed Lot 102. Lot width, required minimum for this zone is 50 feet. Proposed Lot 1 is 27.5 feet. Proposed Lot 1.01 is 25 feet and proposed Lot 102 is 27.5 feet. In addition to those variances, building coverage variance is required whereas 60% maximum is required and for proposed Lot 1, 81.3% is being proposed. Proposed Lot 1.01, 89.4% and proposed Lot 1.02 whereas 81.3%. Also reviewed and should be contained in this report is the, in the application, is the engineering review letter by Remington and Vernick dated March 15th, 2017. The applicant recognizes that that report was...
Yes, we have received that report.
Waivers requested, see the engineer's report is my comment to that. Comments are as follows. The residential units are not utilizing commercial space below them as intended by the ordinance. The site is bounded by the multifamily zone, the two-family zone, the S-30 zone and the S-25 zones. Applicants shall provide testimony where trashing recycling will be stored and handled. I think that's requested in the engineer's report as well. The proposed residential construction is taking advantage of the reduced setback requirements for the, setback requirements for the CBD zone versus the MF zone that the units are intended to replicate. Applicants should provide testimony as to whether or not the units will be fire suppressed. Suite openings will be required. A recently adopted master plan recommends continuing this use at this location as a CBD zone. And as you see, my recommendations, special reasons, you have to provide adequate testimony for the D variance and the C variances in kind. And also, the easement needs to be discussed with the encroachment into the easement. I think that's going to be part of your testimony, so I'll let you cover that.
Correct. We have, we're going to testify on that.
Great. That concludes my report at this time.
Good evening. Brian Callahan of the law firm Callahan-Thompson-Thompson on behalf of the applicant, Solomon Bay Fine Homes. We have tonight three witnesses. I have Jacob Wintergrad, who's the principal with Solomon Bay Fine Homes, who's the contract purchaser. We have Rami Nasser, who is our engineer on the project, and we have John Obelenis, who's our architect on the project. Little bit of background, you guys are familiar with this, I mean, this area, probably our third project in that CBD area on the side streets. A couple of years ago, we had the Barrels project come forward. Six or eight months ago, you had the Seagrape come through, go up on a peel, come back through here on Douglas Avenue, and we have this project here. And it's, it's a balancing act, which we think, you know, because it's, we understand it has a potential for being a fairly tough case because you're in a CBD district. We think that Douglas Avenue is, is not the place to really have commercial on the ground floor, and we'll go through a lot of the testimony due to the narrowness of the street, its previous location, projects that have been approved, the existing houses that are already on Douglas Avenue. So we're talking about that from a use variance point of view, minor subdivision point of view and that. We'll talk about, we've developed a project, we think, to be quasi between CBD standards and MF standards, where the CBD says 000. We haven't given you 000. We've given you some setback relief on sides, rears and fronts to try to blend it in to what it would look like at a Seagrape level but what it also looks like to your next-door neighbor. So we've combined some of those things and there's cantilever, so there's ground floors that are set back a little deeper, overhangs at the second-floor level, overhangs at the third-floor level. So I think you'll see it as, in my opinion, a very attractive project, properly located in Margate, given the things that surround it and how you open up to Douglas Avenue and how Douglas Avenue opens up to the beach and to Atlantic Avenue. So without further ado, let me just call Mr. Wintergrad. He can give you a little bit of background on himself, how he picked the project, why he thinks that it's a good fit for Margate.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name and business address, please?
Jacob Wintergrad, Solomon Bay Fine Homes, 36 Southwood Drive, Cherry Hill, New Jersey, 08003.
Thank you.
Just give a little background, will you?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I know it's been a long night, so I'll be brief and to the point. I have been doing real estate development for 25 years now, mostly out of Philadelphia and mostly doing large commercial, residential, and I have a specialty in the design, development, management of parking structures. I also do spec homes. I build homes here in Margate and in the process of looking at further development opportunities here, came across this property. When I came across the property, we were looking at the commercial and residential end of it. We got the property under agreement, got site control, and in our due diligence, what we've really come back with was that the commercial there is not really viable. The biggest complaint for the residential as well as the commercial was the parking. That is, there is none. So it made it very hard to lease the, the commercial end of it and was, the project just wasn't viable at that point. In addition, since we couldn't put any ventilation in the building, we couldn't do any restaurant uses, which really was one of the better uses for that site. So as a result, we took a step back and looked at the project again. And looking at that street, Douglas, what we saw is a residential street, though half the street is in a commercial district. So looking at it that way and seeing that another project was approved up the street, we figured we'd see what we could do on a residential basis to help continue the fabric of that street. That is, when you turn down that street now, half of it is obviously commercial and half of it is residential. With some of the new housing going in and with this project here, we would almost be taking a street like that and making, giving it its residential feel on both sides. And that seemed like a viable option. We looked into some of the construction, the rest of it, and we think there's a market for it. I also think it's good for the city. I know the real estate taxes you're collecting there are quite low and what, what the units just down the street are already under, one of them's under agreement and the other two, I guess, are still on the market, they're getting decent prices for these houses and the city's going to benefit from that as well. So I would like for my team and I to build these houses for Margate. Any questions or anything?
Let me call John Obelenis, the architect, and walk you through the design of the house, materials being used, landscaping, et cetera.
John, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I will.
Thank you. And your name and business address, please?
John Obelenis, Architecture, 102 South 8th Street, Vineland, New Jersey, 08360.
John, licensed architect?
I am licensed in New Jersey, yes.
How long have you been licensed?
20 years plus.
Worked in Margate before?
Many times, yes.
You're in charge of doing the design here?
Yes, I am.
Why don't you give the board a little bit of what we're planning to do?
Just, can I just break for a minute?
Go ahead.
I have to say that it's welcome me back into space. We're not in a basketball court anymore, although this is a much more intimidating room. It's a courtroom, it feels like, so we have a challenge before us, but it's glad, I'm glad to be back home and making this presentation. And anyway, we're looking at a, basically, a ground-floor parking area, storage, and then two floors above habitable space. We have a first floor with living, kitchen, a guest room, powder room, mudroom, and then another flight up, we have bedrooms, master bedrooms and other bedrooms with bathrooms. So basically, a two-story building on top of a parking area below.
Materials, a little bit about materials?
Well, again, this is going to be consistent with, with the Margate look. You know, we have the cedar siding perhaps, we're looking at white trim. It has the decking with the guardrails and hopefully an attractive-looking guardrail. Roof lines are a little steeper than your basic five and 12 pitch. It's a little more generous pitch to give a little more attractive look off the street. Again, windows, stonework at the base. Again, it's very consistent with the look down the street with Margate.
Let's step back a little bit. Let's talk about Atlantic Avenue. Talk about how you're going to treat Atlantic Avenue from a setback point of view and from, you know, overhangs and landscaping.
Yeah, Jacob spoke well about how to balance and Brian also how to balance the commercial and then the residential look, and I saw the same, I saw the challenge as we have the large beach house to the right of Douglas Avenue, and then we have Douglas Avenue and all of a sudden, not a lot of retail or underused retail. So it's a real sharp contrast between the two. I saw this as an opportunity to not only bring residential across and create sort of a bookend feeling with Douglas Avenue, but because it's an essential business district and my experience with planning is that when you have storefronts, you have resident, commercial storefronts, basically buildings with zero setbacks, you don't want to have something that's so far back that changes that whole look either. You want to kind of maintain that commercial setback, zero setback, but maybe not have it as zero because it is residential. But the challenge is that as you look down the street, you know, you want to see store, 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 flat facades, flat facades, and then the residential is kind of the same. You know, it's not that far different with massing and stuff. But being on a corner, also the challenge was that you don't want to have a flat facade, and this is the elevation off of Atlantic Avenue. It varies. You know, you have the main facade in front, we have decking that turns the corner onto Douglas Avenue. The lower portion of the building, which is the garage level, is setback further. So we have an overhang on the first floor. The first floor is setback to allow for... So, we have an overhang on the first floor. The first floor is set back to allow for landscaping, allow for that when you're walking down the street. That is just a relief from one store after another. So, we have landscaping, setback, and then you need to turn the corner and then go up Douglas, the same thing. We have decks above. The main building itself is not zero setback. The main building is set back a distance from the property line. So, we tried to soften that corner as much as we could.
Talking a little bit about Roger's questions, fire suppression.
Fire suppression, this is a three-unit, so there are two, there's a common wall between each unit. So, we've done this very similar with other projects where we're going to have a firewall that'll give a separation between the units. They're not very large units requiring sprinkling, but they do require a two-hour separation wall between them.
And the same thing from the garage up?
Yes. Yeah. Well, we have to, by code, have a separation with garage doors and, you know, fire-rated ceilings and stuff.
Trash and recycling.
Well, these are single-family homes, so it's responsible to the owner to keep his trash in his building. There's plenty of space at the ground level with garage space and extra space around the garage space to provide for cans, recycling, all out of sight from neighbors.
Garage also provides room for storage. So, people who have bicycles, people who have beach chairs, everything else, will have adequate room in the garage to have those things?
Yes. We provide the more than adequate, again, the Margate code for nine-by-18. We're larger than that, and on the sides, we have space for bicycles, surfboards, you know, beach equipment. Plenty of room for that.
Lighting. What type of lighting are we providing?
Now, when you say lighting, we have, well, natural lighting with windows on all sides because, again, other than the middle unit, the two end units have windows and lighting on all three sides. And then the middle unit will have windows at the rear and on the street level.
I don't have any other questions of Mr. Obelenis from an architectural point of view. Would you open up to the board?
I have a question on the front page of the drawings here. You show two cars in a garage. You show two cars in the garage, and it appears to be about an eight-foot space to get the second car into the garage.
So, we have a one-car garage, basically, a one-car garage, which is set back. And then in front, the requirement is that you need 18 feet from the garage door to the property line. So, that space is, it's like a carport in a sense, where it's parked under the deck above, but you have, it's fully covered from above, but it's a legitimate parking space in front of the garage.
It's open. It's open.
Well, we have a deck above. It's just a deck above.
Yeah. It's open to the street.
Yes. It's open. It's not a covered structure. It's an open space, but it is a legitimate parking space.
What is the width of a car?
Eight foot.
What? Eight foot's good? Okay. All right. Garage doors, eight foot, usually.
And this is the standard. I think one of the questions on the page was that the garage doors look small, but these are eight-foot-wide, standard garage doors on the plan.
Let me call Mr. Nassar.
Mr. Nassar, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your full name and business address, please?
Rami Nassar, 1425 Kentland Boulevard, Mays Landing, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Nassar, licensed engineer?
Yes. I'm planner in the state.
Let's address one of the issues that was raised about the easement, to say what we did and what we're doing. So, we can get that out of the way. And you're referring to which drawing?
I'm referring to the variance plan prepared by our office dated 1/4/2017. If you look at the plans, we have an existing condition and we have proposed conditions. On the proposed conditions, we originally proposed a building to be two-and-a-half feet from the side property line. That was all done, architectural work done before we had the actual survey performed. And then we realized there's a 10-foot-wide easement, five foot on our side, five foot on the northern side of us. So, basically, what we are proposing is to move the first floor, the bottom floor, and the first floor to be five feet from the property line. So, they will clear of the easement. But the second, the third floor would be overhanging by a cantilever. So, basically, that allows any box trucks or any tall cars to get through without having it a problem. So, that would resolve an issue that we had that we were encroaching on the easement. But our revised architectural plans and site plan would reflect that the side yard, property, setback would be five feet.
So, that easement will be kept open for ingress and egress by both neighbors and the neighbors to the rear of us.
Correct. So, basically, if you look at one of the elevations. So, if you look at the elevation plan, it's SK4. On the right side property line, right side, this is fronting Douglas Avenue. The bottom would be moved a few inches to achieve five-foot setback from the property line. This floor would be kicked back to be in line with the bottom floor. So, now you have, the third floor will cantilever. So, basically, you'll have enough space for a tall vehicle to go through, and the easement will be usable as it is now.
Right. Let's go back to the project as a, we need to talk about a use variance.
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about the Medici criteria and why this property would be particularly well-suited for the use that we're proposing.
Let's look at the two things I'd like to bring up also. The existing conditions today. You have two buildings. The corner building has two-story. On the second floor, you have two apartments, and then you have commercial at the bottom. We are proposing to demolish the buildings and have, on the second floor and the third floor, to have commercial in accordance with the CBD zone, but we don't have the commercial use in connection with it. We are only proposing to have parking spaces and storage at the first floor. So, that's the issue we have. That's the reason we need a use variance. So, looking at the...
So, once again, the residential use is a permitted use. What we're missing is the commercial component at the ground level.
Correct. That's the reason we need a use variance. If you look at the neighbors, we are proposing three commercial units. The property next to us has two commercial units, and then I believe Seagrape is under construction. I believe it's four units. And if you look at this block that's the one in CBD zone, half of it is residential. Across the street, you have residential. Douglas Avenue lends itself to a residential street. It's one-way street. You have residential properties. The issue with the CBD zoning on this property, if you come in, tear this building down, put commercial and residential, you cannot comply with the requirements. You're supposed to have onsite parking for the residential component, which you can't achieve that with the zoning as it stands today. So, that causes a problem for redeveloping this property. So, if Mr. Wintergrad decided to say, okay, I'll put commercial at the bottom, then you're going to have a small commercial, just very tiny piece, and behind it, you are going to have an onsite, you know, parking for the commercial component. So, basically, no commercial could be really built, that substantial commercial, and that can function. So, this use here is really would complement this area and give us a nice residential facility.
Walking ourselves down the street, if we get approved, we wind up with three residential.
Correct.
We have residential next to us.
Two residential units.
We then have Seagrape next to us.
I believe it's four residential units, yes.
We then have the back of Colmar.
Right.
Which, as part of their last application, has to do some additional landscaping to tie into the Seagrape project.
Correct. That's what I heard.
And then, at the other end of the street, we have the back of the Chinese restaurant.
Chinese restaurant, yes.
So, we have a couple parking spaces, and we have trash dumpsters, et cetera.
That's all we got, yes. Across the street, we have all residential.
All residential.
And also, the other corners are residential. From Atlantic Avenue, catty corner across the street from us, they're all residential.
All right. Talking about some of the variance relief that we're requesting from a C variance.
Yes, sir.
Walk the board through that a little bit.
What we have is, if you look at the report we have, the property area, the lot area is supposed to be 4,000 square feet. Currently, if you combine both lots, we're a little bit shy. We're about 39,000, 3,929 square feet. The reason these variances, they look at, large variances or the lots are too small, because we would like to have these units as fee simple units. So, basically, these lot lines are technical in nature because what, we have one building, we're just putting lot lines in between, so they can be fee simple for financing purposes. It's easier for a homeowner to have his own lot. That is the reason we're requesting these lots to be that way. Currently, the parcel is 100% impervious. We are proposing to reduce the impervious on those lots. The corner lot would be, I believe, 81%. The middle lot would be 89%, and the lot on the right-hand side would be 81%. So, and the lot width also is supposed to be 50 feet. Currently, we have 80 feet along Douglas, but because of our proposal to just subdivide those units just along, along the property, the building line, is causing us to have smaller frontings.
When we go back to the use variance, we have to come up with the concept of special reasons.
Yes, sir.
There's a positive criteria and a negative criteria.
Yes, sir.
Based on your testimony, are there positives to this particular project?
Yes, sir. If we look at the positive criteria, I'm just going to use this book for a minute. This building is taking an antiquated building, does not comply with the FEMA. We are going to raise it to comply with all the FEMA requirements, and that is advancing that by secure safety from fire, flood, and panic. The second item is, we are having aesthetically pleasing building, and that also promote that by establishing, by having a desirable visual impact environment through creative development. So, that's the other...
And once again, on that particular thing, going down Douglas Avenue at the present time, technically, pretty close to a blank wall at a zero setback?
Yes. You have a couple, yeah, there's no setbacks, and you have some windows, but that's basically it is.
No architectural enhancements, old antiquated building?
Yeah. If you look at Roger's report, you'll see the pictures. Really, the building, old building, they just put some stuff on it, I guess. That's what they did.
Population densities?
Yes.
You think that this is, given Margate's status right now, this is appropriate for a population density?
I think so, because now Margate's becoming kind of a second-home area. A lot of people, they build homes. I've done a lot of work in Margate in the past years. Most of them, they're out of this area. They build a home for summertime, so they can come down. It becomes like Ocean City style, basically. A lot of people here are a second home. And when you look at Douglas, you have all, majority of the street is residential. So, this fits in with what's there now.
Parking. Right now, no parking onsite for either commercial or residential?
No. This property does not have any parking. So, everybody, the resident, they park on the street. The commercial, they have to park on the street. Our proposal will take everybody to be off the street. We have one car, one-car garage, and we have one driveway in front of it that will take two cars. And that is much better than having cars on the street, especially Douglas is one-way street.
Even compare, that's what I was going to ask you. Comparing Douglas as a one-way street with a 50-foot cartway, when you go to the next street over with Essex, you're now on a 90-foot cartway, which really, that street really falls within a true CBD district.
It does, because that allows you to park there. I mean, actually, I lived on Douglas, on Essex, 1987, and we used to park on the street, and we had the parking. We didn't have any issue, so. But Douglas, you don't have the pleasure or the opportunity to park on the street on Douglas.
Negative criteria. We're taking two prongs. Prong number one, they take really a look at, is there a substantial detriment to the public good and/or the character of the neighborhood? What is your opinion?
My opinion, there is no detriment, because with the FEMA, when we comply with the FEMA requirements, that helps the city in its rating, and you are building, building that's safe for the residents. The parking, you are taking the people from parking on the street to park on your site. So, it's off-street parking and the rate of space, basically.
Big tough question because of the master plan. Do you see, with this particular project in this particular area, do you see a substantial detriment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance?
Actually, I don't, because the proposed second and third floor under the master plan and the zoning ordinance is allowed. We're allowed to have the residential component to it. But as I stated before, you cannot comply with the master plan if you have a brand-new development, because you cannot have the parking spaces required onsite. So, I feel this is a better design.
Overall, from, A, in your opinion, the subdivision, the variance relief, the use variance, can it truly be granted without really having any substantial detriment on the character of the neighborhood and the zoning plan?
Yes, sir, because the subdivision is a technical subdivision. You're not creating a single-family lot. You're just having lot lines to make it easier for the homeowners to, not to have a condo association, to have their own lot for financing purposes is much easier.
I don't have any other questions of Mr. Nassar. I, once again, open up to the board.
Yeah. I'll make a couple comments. I understand what you're saying about the lot lines, but the reality of the situation is, in the CBD zone, you're supposed to have 4,000 square feet, and you're deficient on every lot, about 2,700 square feet, correct? Also, on the lot width, you're required to have 50 square feet and, I'm sorry, 50 feet, and we're about half that size. The other thing I didn't hear when we were talking about this project is, we kept talking about Douglas Avenue, but the reality is that the one unit sits on Atlantic Avenue, and that whole block is commercial on the first floor. You know, the master plan, the new master plan is calling for that area to remain commercial with the residential above it. I, you know, I do, I think one part of the testimony which I do agree with is the parking situation. So, I'm not exactly sure how that would be remediated, but it just seems like a lot of big variances for that project.
Well, as Mr. Nassar indicated, the lot lines are technical. So, if you take the lot lines down, you have a property that's 43 by...
Yeah. 39, 49.
39. So, you have 4,000 square feet. You know, we're breaking them up into three separate lots. So, I said, I would say to you, okay, I don't sell them as fee simple single families. I sell them as a three-unit condominium, and I have 4,000 square feet. And I have an 80-foot-wide lot. So, I meet that criteria then of 43 by 80. I'm doing it for technical sale purposes by putting in an imaginary line. I say this, Steve, because half of Margate was done. I mean, if you go back to probably the first project down on the Barbary Coast that Art Ponzio and Bob Brooks did, they came in, and it was an eight-unit condominium, and it got approved. And it sat there for nine months without a sale.
Which unit was this?
This was down on the Barbary Coast, I forget, Amherst Avenue?
Right.
And those units sat. We came back to the board. Art was talking. I said, why don't we go in for a subdivision and create a row home, which the people in Philadelphia understand? Now, do we need 18 variances for every single lot? Because we don't meet lot frontage, we don't meet lot depth, we don't meet... Took us a couple hearings. This board bought that. Within six months, they were all sold, because people mentally understand, I got a row home. It's mine. I don't have to deal with, you know, if I want to paint my door, put a different type of curtain in the window, or if I want to have a pet, and this guy doesn't want to have a pet, I don't have to deal with that. So, the concept between a three-unit condo and a three-unit condominium is an imaginary line. Now, does that imaginary line create the variances? Sure. It now says, okay, I only have this lot area. It says, I only have this lot width. The other variances that we asked for, as I said in the beginning, we were trying to do something that was quasi, because when you look at the CBD, it says, okay, side yards can be zero, side yards can be zero, your front can be zero. If you look at the MF, it talks about eight, eight, 10, and setbacks in the rear, I think, is five or eight, five. So, it talks about that. So, what do we do? We try to give you a seven-and-a-half on one side coming in off the side. You know, the front looks as zero, but really, the building's set back 15 feet. It's the second-floor overhang that gives you the deck that comes out. So, we try to give you something that isn't a 0-0-0 from a CBD, but gives you some setbacks, some dimensions with decks and things along Douglas Avenue. So, that's why, when I called it quasi, it was halfway between a CBD and more toward an MF standards. an MF standards that we were applying to give you some of that interesting aesthetic appearance. I have one other witness I'd like to call. We have Paula Hartman here tonight, who's a local realtor, that can give you some information on, talking about the concept of residential and commercial, and where it's going in the city of Margate on some of these side streets from a point of view, because it's important to note the direction that Margate is taking, so that this board can act accordingly. Paul?
Yes, yes, you do.
Thank you.
Somebody swear me in?
Yes, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name?
Paula Hartman.
And your business address?
9711 Ventnor Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman.
Margate, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sitting here, and I'm chopping at the bit to talk. I was trying to sell this corner. I think I lost track of the years. I asked Ira, I don't know if it's five years or six years, that we had this listing. I even lost the listing after two or three years. After me, it went to Sotheby's, it went to Mark Arby. It's been all over town trying to sell this corner. Nobody will buy this piece, because people will not open a business with that much square footage on the first floor and no parking. That was the first thing I heard. The second thing I heard is nobody wants to be in commercial away from Ventnor Avenue, where all the other stores are. They said, I don't want to be by myself here and try to build a business. And I tell you, I spent thousands of dollars of marketing, I created every kind of business through there, from the Arianna Nails Place, the hair salon, to a dress shop, to a jewelry store, to a restaurant. I went in and out of that property at least 100 times. So, it's not like I didn't try to put commercial in there, okay? Couldn't sell it, then I tried to rent it, okay? They wouldn't even rent it. Restaurant would rent it, we couldn't have a stove. We have two apartments upstairs. It's not a restaurant. So, we couldn't have a restaurant, we couldn't sell it, we couldn't lease it. I tried leasing it, it's a lot of square footage, so it's a lot of rent. You got to cover a lot of rent with a three-month season. It's not saleable or rentable as commercial. I'm down in the trenches. I tried for years, for years. Now, you're creating parking there, which is a very exciting thing, and as a realtor, beach house sells like hotcakes. It's the first thing in our office to rent, and they sell in a minute when we get a listing there. And it's a great location near the beach. Shankman and Catterburn used to be commercial across the street. That's residential now, too. The area's changing, and it's residential. But these townhouses are gorgeous. If you look at the design, I could have sold all three of them already if they were built, because one of them will have direct ocean views, and we're going to be a lot cheaper than down the street, and they're very, very saleable. The design is gorgeous. He's doing nice finishes. He's not doing junk. It's a beautiful project. It's an upgrade to the neighborhood, and if you make some pet-friendly, they're going to fight over them, because the only other place is the beach house, and they're old. So, I think you should really consider what happens to this corner, because nobody else really wants it, and Ira can't keep selling dresses for 1,000 years. He's been built up there for 50 years, and he's established. But to go in there and open a business there, I don't know if you would do it yourself, because you're all by yourself, and you're there for three months with tourists that are a block away. So, that's the problem, and it really is a beautiful piece. And I've been in a lot of houses. This is a gorgeous design. It's not a cookie cutter townhouse. It's something special. It's near the boardwalk, it's on a great street, and I can't see anything wrong with it when down the street is selling townhouses for a million one on the same block. Now, I also had those listings. Let me tell you what it was like to try to rent those for the summer on Douglas Avenue before they put those townhouses. Nobody wanted that either. You couldn't rent commercial there. There wasn't even room for a dumpster. The street was so narrow. So, commercial, we couldn't even give those rentals away last summer. So, thank God, those were approved, and I can't see how they can have townhouses down the block, townhouses across the street, and not on this corner that needs it so much. So, that's all. I do know that they'll sell. That I can assure you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Paula? Hearing none. That's it for us.
I have a question for the gentleman who was last up.
Mr. Nassar.
Mr. Nassar?
Yes, sir.
When you said that if you made it commercial on Atlantic Avenue, that it would just be too small, but you never gave us any dimensions of what that would be, represent a commercial on Atlantic Avenue?
I would say about 700, 800 square feet.
700, 800 square feet?
700 to 800, maximum.
700 only, with a unit upstairs?
But that commercial won't have any parking.
I understand that.
Yes.
I understand that.
Yes.
So, in this plan, did you ever decide to consider making that small commercial on the corner of Atlantic Avenue, keeping it, and then, you know, moving your other, your townhome concept further down the block, you know, carrying it down further down Douglas Avenue? Did you ever look at that?
Yeah, we won't comply with the parking requirements, because I don't have room to have six parking spaces and the commercial piece.
But it wouldn't be six, it wouldn't be three units. You'd be cutting it down.
What would you do above the commercial then? You just have commercial one story, and then you push it back?
You'd have a unit on top of it.
Yeah, you'll have a unit on top.
You'd need to get a variance for that.
So, you need two parking spaces for that. But the problem is, you get a variance to sell a unit without the parking, that's going to be very difficult, especially that corner is a premium property, because that's an oceanfront property.
I grant you that. You're correct.
That's an issue. Otherwise, we would have thought about that. To put the commercial in the back doesn't, does not work, unfortunately.
One thing, Paula, you can put a restaurant in there. You'd have to come in for, absolutely, absolutely. You rate the ceiling, and you use the, not the B duct, you'd have to use welded ductwork, eighth-inch ductwork going up. You can do it.
What did Roger ever build?
There is no other Roger anymore.
That's insane.
Yes, there is.
Does anyone else from the board have anything?
I just have one comment. I was thinking, if the hair salon is in the middle of the block, and they wanted to sell their property and tear it down and put a house up there, and it was commercial on the corner, and then a house in the middle, and then commercial next to that, you know what I mean? If somebody wanted to do that, we're saying we would let them do that, like tear a building down, a commercial establishment, and put another house in the middle. You know what I mean? And say the corner property did not sell, but it stayed as a store, would we want to put a residential in the middle of the commercial block?
Well, I go back to this.
I don't think we would.
That's why each project is taken a look at on an independent basis to say, does this project here, is this particularly suited for this corner?
We're just talking about a corner. Will it go down the block and remove all the commercial on that Atlantic Avenue street, eventually, you know?
If that was happening, then you guys would be back re-looking at your master plan to see why all of those commercial things are going down the ways.
Because the neighbors are complaining about the bar noise and about everything else that goes on on that. That's why the commercial would be moved.
Now, suitors bought the building next door. They bought, they expanded, so they bought their building next door.
Anybody else from the board? Would anyone from, oh, go ahead. Anyone from the public like to speak?
Raise your right hand, Mr. Varrallo. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name and address, please?
James Varrallo, 22 South Douglas Avenue, Margate.
Thank you.
The applicants have satisfactorily addressed, revised their plans to move the building out of the right-of-way easement, so I have no objections to the project as proposed, as long as it conforms with, I understand that the building will be approximately where the existing building is.
Right, we'd be five feet from the property.
From the right-of-way line. So, yes, my concerns have been addressed, and I have no objections.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Public portion's closed.
I have a question. Ronnie, what's the offset for the upper floors to the right-of-way line?
If you look at, I think, this is looking down Douglas.
Could you use the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. I thought I was on my laptop. So, if you look at this outside line, this is the property line. The bottom is seven feet back. That is where the entrance to, which is this entrance. Then, we have another, I would say, 11 more feet back where the garage would be. So, you have a car sits right here, then you have the garage. On the second floor, or the first floor, if you want to, the first residential portion, it's also seven feet from the property line, from the front property line. When you go up to the third level, it becomes four feet.
That's along the easement?
No, this is facing Douglas. So, basically, just imagine you're driving down Douglas. This is what you will see from the corner of Ventnor.
The easement, we will be five feet back
Yeah, the easement's this side here.
From the property line, so that Mr. Varrallo's five-foot easement area will be open, and our five-foot, so that 10-foot easement area is open, so we're five feet off of our property line.
I understand that, but all the way up?
No. First floor, second floor, the third floor is cantilevered.
Right. So, if you look at this, Roger, here, if you take this line, the bottom floor?
Right.
We go all the way up straight line to the first residential. That will be all five feet. So, basically, we're looking about almost 20 feet from the ground level to the cantilever. That will be five feet.
So, you're still encroaching into the easement?
With the third, yeah, with the third floor.
Okay.
At 25 feet.
So, you still have an encroachment, guys?
Well, an encroachment into an easement, which easement is over our property line. So, we own the property.
Right.
We just grant it an easement for ingress and egress. So, we believe that by having 20 feet of open space, that any truck that would drive through that space has access back to the back of the property. Most of those trucks going through the tunnel, they say like 13.9, so we're figuring, most of them are box trucks going back and forth, so we would be seven feet clear of what we think would be the tallest truck going through.
All right. So, the easement's amended essentially, because it doesn't, it's not in perpetuity, right?
Currently, it's, currently, it's not, because on Mr. Varrallo's piece, there's an overhang, if I'm not mistaken. It's overhang the easement at this point. So, I don't think that's an issue, because on his property next to us, there's an overhang, like two-foot overhang, so it's the same thing.
Is there any language on a D describing the easement?
Ingress and egress. So, it doesn't say air rights or anything else. So, in the event it would, we would amend the easement, and then specify that property owners are committed to extend on a cantilever out into that easement area at a height of X amount of height for us and X amount of height for Mr. Varrallo, since both of us would be encroaching into the easement area.
Just want to make sure.
Yep.
Okay.
Most of your testimony you argued have been related to the economic viability of this project as the purpose of the case. My understanding of the land use side, is that that's not bases for the case.
We've talked about the economic viability of the property, but we've also talked about the parking element of the property, the FEMA requirement that you're now sitting with a property that's below FEMA, that hurts the city's rating, is zero, antiquated building, aesthetic enhancements, general population benefit, what's happening in Margate after 50 years, and the fact of economics. So, I think that we're trying to tie it into showing how it is particularly well-suited for this particular property on this particular corner of Douglas Avenue. So, I think it's much more than economic. It's all of those other factors that Mr. Nassar went through to tie it into it.
Really?
Really.
I think he did discuss the negative and positive criteria.
We went through positive and negative.
Yeah, I didn't do it.
That usually takes also.
Okay, anybody else from the board?
That's why we don't cover fences for you. I got that, we're good with that.
All the comments in Mr. McLornan's report, you agree to those?
We saw those comments, and we also saw the comments from Remington and Vernick dealing with gradings and curb cuts and those types of things, so those things can be certainly incorporated.
Thank you. Okay. Any other board discussion before I formulate the relief request by motion? Hearing none. The applications for a number of different things. One is a minor subdivision. It's currently two lots. They're trying to subdivide into three lots with essentially common walls, fee simple. Also, it requires minor site plan approval per the ordinance. There's also a request for a D variance relief, a use variance relief. The CBD zone is, requires commercial use on the first floor, or ground floor, I'm sorry, and the applicant's proposing residential only. I would have to say that I agree with the analysis of the applicant, at least, that they have to show special reasons for this. You've heard there are special reasons for that. It has to be particularly suited for the area in question. The board will have to decide whether they feel that's the way that it is. There's also C variances that are required per Mr. McLornan's report. One is for lot area. Required minimums of 4,000 square feet. All the proposed lots, proposed Lot 1, Lot 1.01 and Lot 1.02 are approximately 1,302 to 1,324 square feet. Lot width requirements, 50 feet. All the lots are between 25 minimum and 27 and 1/2 feet maximum. Building coverage, 60% is required, or permitted. The lots are 81.3%, 89.4%, and 81.3%. The conditions are all those comments that are set forth in Mr. McLornan's report and in the Remington-Vernick report. So, I need a motion in the affirmative for those variances and for the subdivision site plan and conditions set forth.
Anyone going to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Clem Waslewski.
Continuing chipping away of our slowly diminishing commercial land. They're asking for an awful lot. Lot areas, not much more than 30% of what's required. Lot width, half of what's required. Building coverage, way over the maximum allowed. I don't think their special reasons are valid, and I don't agree with their contention on positive or negative criteria. I vote no.
Rich Patterson.
I want to go back to the new master plan. This was a plan that's been going in the works for over two years. In that process, we had meetings with realtors, builders, retail stores, banks, doctor's offices. We tried to meet with every type of group in town. The master plan is a result of those meetings, of what we just came up with. Some of your points, I just don't agree with. You have a residential use, but you don't want to use these residential setbacks. I don't agree, this is what I don't agree with, is your reasoning that, well, we'll make it halfway. If it's a residential property, I think it should have the residential setback and have some landscaping in there, have some green in there. I don't think it's a bad thing to have the setback where it should be. Another concern I have, which I have with other cases, is, it's been previously mentioned, but you're comparing this site with what's going on down Douglas Avenue. I don't look at this as the same case as the Sea Grapes property that was in the middle of that block. I look at this as an Atlantic Avenue property, that we, 10 days ago reiterated, we want this as commercial. This board is here to try to help to direct the direction of Margate, not follow what the direction of Margate's going in. And I don't think that direction is to jam in more houses. We have more and more residential with less and less commercial. That makes the quality of life for those in the residential district less desirable, because there is less residential, less commercial to support it. So, I vote yes. I mean, I vote no.
Mike Cristaldi.
I definitely have to agree with Rich Patterson, that everything's gone the wrong way in town, and what Clem said, chipping away at our commercial is getting worse and worse. You're going for so many variances, if somebody can You're going for so many variances, if somebody came in there commercially and came in with probably less than half of the variances that you have coming in here for it, with this one, I gotta vote no.
Craig Pomisano.
The strip of commercial businesses on Atlantic Avenue, they don't, they're not all working a hundred percent, but we don't want to lose any commercial aspect of that. If you could somehow get a commercial aspect into that front building, I think you would have had a much better chance of, of passing your project here. I agree with Rich Patterson and Clem Wazlaski as far as the commercial and, and putting the house there on Atlantic Avenue. And Douglas Avenue itself is, has turned, but not Atlantic Avenue yet. I can't see that turning yet. I vote no.
David Carter.
I definitely agree with the fact that we're not talking right now about Douglas Avenue, we're talking about Atlantic Avenue. And I agree with the variances that are just, you know, way out of line in order to make this happen, and so I agree with Rich and I agree with Clem. I have to vote no.
It was a very thorough presentation. Logically, I understand your arguments and the concept of wanting the three, three fee simple homes for purposes of sale. Ms. Hartman's testimony was very thorough, very convincing, but practically speaking, this is still essentially a multifamily home in a CBD district with no commercial, getting the benefit of the fee simple for purposes of sale. Again, Rogers' report best summarizes it, that you're essentially taking advantage of whichever zone requirements suit your needs in this point, I think. Again, this isn't a Douglas Avenue project. It's a project, a unique application that is, again, on Atlantic Avenue with that very high-profile frontage. The master plan that was just revised took careful consideration, and as they taught us, they worked very hard to avoid any spot zoning, and they made that very clear, that that's something that's frowned upon and never suggested. So they even taught us suggestions that we made were inappropriate, because they created a spot zoning effect. So by getting rid of our commercial, we're doing just what they advised us not to do. As to the D use variance, I feel unfortunately the applicant failed to show any special reasons to grant relief for that use variance. Based on the testimony, I don't see any undue hardship to the applicant. The property is still very useful, viable. And again, the master plan, the purposes zoning would not be carried out by eliminating that commercial zone. As to the C variances, for purposes of argument, they are, in my opinion, grossly excessive as to building coverage, way over the max permitted. And again, as to the lot area and to the lot width, they're both extremely insufficient. You're creating three separate lots. That's not what they are, but unfortunately, as to your variances, they're insufficient. So for all those reasons, I'd have to vote no.
Mike Crichman.
Yeah, I think the C variances are huge. I think that not have, I think having a residential on the corner of Atlantic Avenue in the CBD zone in that area is, would be out of conformity with the rest of the neighborhood, so I'm gonna vote no.
The application does not pass, zero to seven.
I'd like to thank the board for at least making a unanimous rejection. Have a good night, everybody.
For the record, Mr. Gallantino and Mr. Collins are back. All right, so we're gonna do our last case, which is Temple, Sherat, Haim, eighty-five oh one, Ventnor Avenue, block two thirteen point zero two, Lot twenty-five, in the S sixty district, to grant C variance, lot size of a subdivision, driveway location, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. And this is a continuance of a previous meeting.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, may it please the board. Jack Platter from Fox Rothschild, representing Temple, Sherat, Haim. Yes, sir.
She wasn't here for the first case, so she can't vote on this, right?
No, she can't unless she listens to the, the recording of it. If she didn't, hasn't certified to it, she can't vote.
Good night.
We will miss her.
So at the, at the conclusion of the last meeting, it seemed that there was a number of issues. One of the issues was access from Ventnor Avenue-
Would anyone mind if I switch the tapes, please?
Take your time.
Thank you.
You'll hear Mr. Poncio testify about it. Is we eliminated the access from the center lot on Ventnor Avenue, and what we're doing is we're proposing a twelve-foot wide access easement from Kenyon Avenue to service both the corner lot on Kenyon Avenue and the interior lot. So there'll be only one access easement for, an access easement for both of those lots. We still though, do need one variance, and that would be from the lot area. So two of the lots will comply. One of the lots is short, it's five thousand, approximately five thousand square feet, where six thousand square feet is required. But the proposal is that any homes built on those lots will meet all of the bulk requirements. So at this time, Mr. Poncio, I'd like to have him sworn to testify.
Thank you. Arthur, do you swear from the tell the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth?
Mr. Poncio was previously qualified, so is it acceptable that he's a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, the surveyor? Mr. Poncio, the plans you're gonna testify from tonight, they were prepared by you or under your direction? Okay, and you heard my introduction, would you just briefly describe the revised proposal to the board?
Sure, thank you. This plan is the revised subdivision plan for the three-lot project. The main revision here is the relocation, is the location of a new easement in the rear of what is Lot C, that is at the corner of Kenyon and Ventnor Avenues. It's twelve-foot wide, it would provide access, ingress and egress, to the center lot, Lot B, as shown on the plan. There would be a driveway also on the Kenyon Avenue lot, and there's some discussion about combining the two in the one. We're amenable to that, should the board favor it that way, rather than a double driveway. We would have no problem having both the Lot C and Lot B access Kenyon Avenue via the new drive, proposed driveway area.
Is that driveway, as shown, is that a double-wide driveway, they could vote for it, or is that one single driveway for both houses?
Okay, good question. Mr. Patterson, it's shown as twelve-foot wide, which is pretty generous for a driveway, as you can appreciate. The driveway, the curb cut out here, if this plan is proposed, is proposed as approved, would be approximately twelve-foot wide. The cars would enter here, turn into the lot, into the back of the lot, back out, and then exit in the front, front mode out onto Kenyon Avenue.
Well, I think my question is, is it two lanes or one lane? Can a car go out and in at the same time?
No, the way this is proposed, it's one.
Okay, so it's a shared driveway?
It's a shared driveway.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Platter mentioned other, other conditions on the property. The lots, as you see them, would meet the front yard setback, would meet the rear yard setback, the side yard setbacks, the lot coverage, any other aspects, bulk standards and zoning ordinance. We were not asked for any variance whatsoever. The one variance was we would seek, we have a lot area, but what is shown as proposed Lot A at Lancaster Avenue, although it does need a variance for lot area, the dimension of that lot is fifty-four point four seven feet along the front, Ventnor Avenue, a minimum depth of ninety feet and one inch ninety-oh eight on the Lancaster Avenue side, and ninety-four feet on the interior side. It's still a very genericized parcel of ground. I'll go through a couple exhibits quickly here. We did a lot of this last time, but just to show you a couple things. This lot is occupied, as you see, in the foreground here, in the photograph, on the right-hand side, essentially takes up almost a whole piece of property. There are setbacks, I'll show you in a moment, which are non-conforming, three-foot side, three-foot rear yard setback all along the back of the property. Let me show it to you real quickly, it'll take a little second. And of course, that's, that will be eliminated, which is a benefit.
I think it's on the back, I think it's on the back of your plan.
Thank you.
You know, late.
It's the existing building, as I said, essentially it occupies the entire property, the land being about seventeen thousand square feet, and the other building is three point nine, four feet from the, let's call it our rear property line, the two adjoining dwellings next door. That's important if that would be removed. I think everyone would agree to that. So across the street from us, this photograph on the left side, you're all extremely familiar with that block, and you can see it's a commercial block from, on street to street, directly across the street from this subject parcel. I think that's very important as well, as we go through the testimony here. Let's see here. Originally, I showed you this, just to throw it up there for a second. Here's the original layout of the area. You can see this is Jerome Boulevard, the name Jerome happens to be off the sheet. The parkway, beautiful parkway here, terminating at Mansfield Avenue. And then there's our lots in what's called a transition area between Jerome Avenue, entering into the gateway to the parkway, which is quite beautiful. And there, here is the original layout of the block. Four lots, approximately forty feet in width, more or less, across the street, back in those days, this was a nineteen thirty-eight plan, by the way. Across the street here, you can see the commercial buildings, they were there then, they're still there, essentially in the exact footprint that they are. The doctor's office doesn't show it here, of course, it was built much later than that. That's occupying this particular property right here. We've got a little bit of mixed use across the street, fellas. So the way I look at this is, we're here to subdivide the property, so of course, that's what we would like the board to give us an approval for. So we have, I see, two options. We could make two lots and get by right subdivision, it's pretty simple, we could do that. We're here for three, and we're here for three because, in my opinion, in my professional opinion as a planner, and studying this area and the city as of Margate, as I've done for all these years, I think it's more appropriate for the three lots. Let me show you why, a couple things. Well, one, first of all, the orientation of the property with regard to the uses in the neighborhood, especially across the street, but this is pretty telling. If we, if we divide it in two, there it is, very beautiful.
Mark, could you switch that up a little higher? Sorry, did you hear this? No, you have the microphone.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the drone. The, sorry about that. We could divide it in two. Essentially, this just shows the property divided down the middle. We have seventeen thousand square feet. If we divide it, let's say in half, you have eighty-five hundred square feet per lot, okay? Let's look at the pattern of the area. I was asked last time to show, and it was a good, good question, I think Mr. Patterson, Chairman Patterson, asked me that question. He asked me to look at the lots to the left, and we had shown an exhibit to have, which we identified the lots in our block, which is also important. This is S twenty-five zoning, by the way, in our block, and the piece up front is S sixty. What I did is I said, what if we did divide this in half and had eighty-five hundred square foot lots? So I said, well, let's see if we're compatible and consistent with the parkway and the rest of the city in this area. So I took the entire parkway, all the way down to Wilson Avenue, and we calculated the areas of every lot. And what we found is, if we divide this in two, these four lots that are shaded are the only other lots that are eighty-five hundred square feet or more. So I looked at that and I said, goodness, is that really the right thing we should do? Should I be creating eighty-five hundred square foot lots, essentially not on the parkway, although it's close, close to it, not on the parkway, across the street from commercial? And should I create eighty-five hundred square foot lots with a backdrop of S twenty-five, when I'm only going to be comparable to four lots that are seven blocks away? My professional opinion in looking at this is that makes no sense. When you look alternatively at a, a three-lot plan, although we need the variance, no question, we need the variance, is it more compatible with the neighborhood? And I look at it as a, as a transition, if you will, from the smaller lots, the S twenty-five, there were some lots here created, oh, S thirty, there's lots here, this is on Jerome, we mentioned that briefly, there it is. The board and the city did the right thing, this particular lot here, it was mis-zoned, it's S sixty, there's no question about it, and the board did the right thing. So here we are, right around the corner, I'm saying, what are we compatible with?
The lots behind us are zone too, right behind us.
Yeah, this is S twenty-five.
No, I mean the two lots right behind us that were S sixty.
The S, that's a good point you bring up, because, incidentally, when the city created the zone, actually, I got to show that to you more clear on this.
When the city created that S sixty zone?
The S sixty zone here. What they did, this was always S sixty, it was extended for the large lot here, Blessed Sacrament, and you see the piece that was then broken off, made S thirty. We're, we're the extension, we're that block. What they did, what the city fathers did when they framed the new zoning map, they took the two lots behind us and zoned them S sixty. They're both five thousand square foot lots, but they put them in the S sixty zone. They've created two non-conforming lots that haven't never changed. You can't add to those lots, you can't subdivide those lots, you have nothing you can do. You have two non-conforming lots, which in my opinion, is not the right thing to do when you're doing the new zoning map. You don't take existing lots that cannot be changed in any way, shape, or form, that are built on, and say, we're gonna, we're gonna put you in a zone now and make you non-conforming. That's what was done. Why? I can't answer that. But that is what was done, and it's not the right thing to do from a planning perspective. If, if in fact, they wanted to extend, the city wanted to extend the S sixty for some reason to include Blessed Sacrament, then in my opinion, if they wanted to do that, it would certainly not include lots that are not six thousand square feet in size. So we are compatible with the, go back to our three-lot plan, go back, I guess it's up here. We are compatible. We are, the five thousand square foot lot is compatible with the two lots immediately behind us, the six thousand, these are, these are fully compliant, there's no issue with them whatsoever. You know, we look at this many ways, in talking to our clients. If the board thought that perhaps the five thousand square foot lot may be too small, some people may have that opinion, it's not my opinion, but some may, we could re, portion this. We could take that differential and apply it across the board. We could take that and add three hundred feet, that is, subtract three hundred, so go fifty-seven hundred, fifty-seven hundred, and that, that lot would be right around the same, the same number, maybe fifty-eight, fifty-nine hundred. We could add that area back in. That's a possibility, we're amenable to that. And if we did that, we would still have adequate frontage, we have adequate depth, meaning we meet the ordinance, and no other bulk variances would occur if we do that. And maybe that's something we could talk about. It would be a nice transitional, transitional size of these lots as we get into the, the parkway. But to go to the option without considering all of this, and say, no, you know what, we'll stick with the two lots. Again, in my professional opinion, you all know me for so long, and this is what I've done my entire life, I will tell you, that is incongruous with this neighborhood. I think it would be detrimental to the neighborhood to have an eighty-five, two eighty-five hundred square foot lots adjacent to, to five thousand with a backdrop of an entire block of S twenty-five lots. I just, I just cannot imagine that the person that would come and develop those two lots as they should rightfully be developed on eighty-five hundred square feet in a situation like that. I think those lots will sit, in my opinion, and if they are ultimately developed, I do not think they'll be developed to the potential to what they, a lot size, a lot of that size in the city would be deserving of. That is my opinion, and you know how much, how many properties I work on in the city, and how many homes I lay out every day of my life, this is what I do. And I honestly don't see the benefit of the two-lot plan.
Why do we choose the smaller lot to be the one on the lot?
Reason that was done, Mr. Richmond, is because of the configuration of the lot the way it is. The, could be reversed, I mean, the way that a lot was tucked in like that, what we wanted to do was make sure we had some adequate frontage. I was trying at one point to even out the, the size of the homes that could potentially be built. It's not only the lot size, you have to apply the front yard setback here, if you do the average on both sides, and then the side yard setback inside, you try to get close to even these things out. We, we could look at a even building envelope, we could look at an even lot frontage, we could try to equalize the areas. There's so many different ways that this little three-lot plan could be done, and we've looked at all of them. And we're amenable to make any modifications that the board would see fit, we would do that. We could adjust our frontages, we could adjust our areas, we could do, we could swap this and put the larger lot to the other side. From our perspective, from my perspective, I think each one of those works. So that's something we'd be very open to discuss. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, yes.
You did this, you have the two lots on Ventnor Avenue, and the one in the back. These all come out so close, over, they're over fifty-five hundred square foot each lot.
Okay.
You have the two driveways over here, and the one driveway over here, nothing on Ventnor Avenue, and you're getting your three lots. There's two variances instead of one.
I appreciate that. The question was raised there by Mr. Cristaldi, could we essentially put the line in this mode, ninety degrees, to create a lot, and a lot, and essentially leave the other lot on the other side? It's possible? I mean, we have to discuss that with other clients, but-
Mark, what's the, what's the red dotted lines, I'm, what's the red dotted lines within the lots?
They would be the- The, they would be the applied setbacks. In other words, that would be the setback that would, by ordinance, would be required.
All right, um, I, um, I'm, I'm looking at the, the property between Lancaster and Mansfield. They have a hundred and sixty-six frontage on Atlantic. I come up with a hundred and sixty-six feet of frontage between Mansfield and Lancaster, uh, and only eight feet more frontage on the lot we're talking about, where there's two houses on the lot between Lancaster and Mansfield leading into the parkway section.
Okay? You're talking about this block here?
Yeah, I'm talking about that lot there, that's a hundred and sixty-six feet of frontage. And as you go into the parkway, I imagine they're almost the same frontage, I don't have that.
No, that's a good, that's a good point.
I don't have that frontage o, on the lots as you go into the parkway. To me, when you turn the corner at Jerome Avenue and you pass the church, it's almost like it could be a start to the parkway.
Bring up a good point.
With two lots, and then the next block has two lots, and then they all have two lots after that.
There's a, there's a technical answer for that, and you bring up a good point. Um, if you take a look at the next block, the two lots that you're speaking about?
Yeah.
The S sixty goes six lots north of that. See the S sixty line? Greg?
Um, I'm looking over here, look.
The S sixty is one, two, three, four, five lots deep.
Oh, yeah, it does, and, and on that block.
And six lots deep, people, and that, so I can understand that. I, I agree with what you're saying.
I'm just looking at the front, the front lots on Atlantic, I mean, on Vettner Avenue.
Yeah, well...
Not, not into the depth of it all.
There's, there's two different technical reasons. One would be the, the actual zoning, where this is S twenty-five, right where I'm pointing, that's S, S sixty all the way back to the line. But the second, uh, the second part of that is something that will, is germane to the application, is the parkway itself. That lot is on the parkway.
The one I'm talking about, a hundred and sixty-sixteen?
Yeah, I mean, that lot doesn't look across the street at our, you know, commercial buildings.
That starts.
That actually is the parkway.
It's not across from Commercial.
I just try to give it, from the professional response, that is, technically, there's S sixty for four or five lots deep, because they wanted to capture that lot, is really why they did that. Uh, and also, the other lot eleven, it is on the parkway, it is appropriate, and it should be eighty by ninety, because that dimension, if you look, matches every lot all the way down to there.
That's what I, that's, that's my point, because it just, to me, it leads, it leads just one more block towards Jerome, of being, it could be two lots.
Right. It aren't, aren't, it could be, and let's not forget, what you have here in this block, you have the, the full parkway with the magnificent landscape, and then the taper for Lot Twenty-four.
I see that.
Where it disappears there.
Yeah.
With, with Commercial across the street.
The doctor's office is right here.
Right.
But not, of course, it's not across from...
And you don't see, traveling down Vettner Avenue, you don't see the S sixty that goes back on Mansfield and Nassau.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I'm just giving you the technical reason why, I think I agree with what Mr. Ponzi said, and why I think this is different, significantly different than what we have here. I think, I think it's very different.
I think what most people, I think what most of the board is saying, that the three houses on Vettner Avenue, they're not liking.
Right. We're not, we're not opposed to your suggestion.
And if we get to...
That could work, that would work.
On Vettner Avenue, I, I, I think you have a better shot.
What was that, Mike?
You could reconfigure the three lots.
They end up all in fifty-five hundred square foot. Two variances instead of one, but it's more powerful.
So, so these, you have, these two would one...
This is the church over here.
Where's the Steeble?
And this one would come over here, this guy's got a nice area, a pool in the back, what's that?
The testimony last month was that the synagogue looked at that and didn't want to do it. Mark, the testimony last month was from Mr. Plackton, was that the synagogue looked at that option and did not want to do it.
I think, I think we said we did look at that alternative, it didn't seem like a good alternative. But I think, I, I think what we were trying to do is minimize the variances, only ask for one variance. But if the board feels that, uh, that's a better plan, that would work for us.
I think prior discussion said there would be like a lot with variance required for that on one of the lots, too.
I think so.
It's the average.
If you measured it right out the frontage, you'd be okay.
Who would make it?
You know, you'd be okay.
And you could make Lancaster Avenue bigger.
This would go to the full size, six houses.
They could make Lancaster six thousand.
That's the, that's the better lot.
Essentially, it's something ten feet. Put this right here. Essentially, if we do that, this lot would go to six thousand square feet, and that's a nice transition.
The other way? Oh, I see what you're saying, oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
I hope that's exactly straight, and it's kind of...
Close enough.
And then you would have two driveways?
We would have a lot, if we put a lot like this, we would have, because exactly, if it was done in this mode, this lot, let's call this, let's go A, B, C, okay? So A would be about sixty-three feet wide, and it would have six thousand square feet. B would be fifty feet wide, and it would be...
And that's fifty?
About a hundred and ten feet deep, more or less. And then fifty, and, and this would be fifty-four feet, a lot on the corner of this. C would be fifty-four right there, but the same depth of about a hundred and ten, more or less.
So they would be like an S fifty zone?
Maybe like an S fifty.
Arthur, if you did a, what you're planning there, then we're essentially going to take the corner of Lancaster, is it? Or Canyon, no, Canyon.
Canyon.
And we're going to have the side of a house entering the parkway. Nobody's going to build on a fifty-foot deep...
No, they'll, they'll face the parkway with a garage on the side.
It's only going to be fifty foot deep.
Meaning they'll face that?
You're going to put your address on Canyon, I wouldn't do it on... Yeah, the door would be in the middle of the house that way. It wouldn't, it would be crazy. Yeah, that would look ugly.
You're going to have two houses facing Vettner Avenue.
Right.
With the garages on the side, so your driveway cuts are going Canyon and Lancaster.
Right, but only one would be, one lot, well, lot would only be fifty foot deep. You wouldn't, how could you put a house sideways on there?
Yeah.
That wouldn't look good for the parkway, it would be horrible. Nobody would buy it. Thank you, what do you think?
I think this configuration certainly is, I don't think that if you configured it the way they have it, that that middle house...
Is disaster.
Will, will be very, very, nobody will want to buy that middle house, because it'd be easy. I think it'd be very difficult. I think this is a better configuration.
I, I don't think it's about who's going to buy, how they're going to buy the house. I think we're talking about the aesthetics of the park.
One at a time.
I, I, what I don't like, it, with an easement and one driveway, is the possibility of eight cars coming out of that driveway. You could have two four-bedroom houses, maybe, they're probably, they'll probably be five-bedroom homes.
There'll be five.
And, and you could have possibly five cars at each house in the summer. And it's very possible, and it's probable. So there could be ten cars exiting on, on Canyon Avenue at any given time. And that, and that's a busy street, narrow street, the church is there. I don't, I don't like the idea of eight, of two houses dumping out on the one street, that's...
Are, are, are you, are you considering this?
We're okay with it.
This is what the board...
Is this, are you considering it?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Well, with that in mind, I would like to read my objections that I was going to read in my vote, and that might help you...
Thank you.
Consider it. May I?
Sure, go right in.
Let me speak to you on, on your account.
Yes.
This, uh, you talked before about you thought the board did not intend for this, I'm sorry, the board did not intend for this to be S sixty, and it didn't make sense. And ten days ago, we absolutely said this should be S sixty, we reiterated it. And those two crazy lots behind it were the two little houses, we changed them to S twenty-five to correct the error. So we did feel that there was an error there, but we left this as it was. You've got sixteen blocks between where we're sitting now and where this property is. There's only one block on Benson Avenue that's a disgrace, where three houses were put in, on Vettner Avenue. Let me get the other points, and this may help you decide that this is what you want to do, because I, this... Anyway, there could be no question of the prior board's or our intent that we want that to be S sixty. I mean, that, again, it was reaffirmed ten days ago. Uh, the other argument I heard was that if two lots are maintained, the lots would be way too big to have a marketable product. And anywhere else these lots would be described as postage stamps. I mean, you're, you're, it, it's crazy that these lots are enormous, that the house right across the street is a modest house. With two houses, you have, um, it, it seems like spec home builders and some realtors with total company here excluded look to maximize the footprint of the house on a lot. And a twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred square foot lot, you would have room for lawn, landscaping pool, outdoor barbecue area, many other options, that would make the entrance to our parkway area much more appropriate and fitting. With that said, I'm most concerned with making it appropriate to the area entering the parkway. And if the third house was not on the parkway, I would not read this in my vote.
Anybody else from the board? From the public like to speak? All proportions closed? So, you want to explain what we're doing here?
Mr. Plackton, do you want to make any type of closing?
Oh, okay.
Okay, we need, we need a motion. Okay, sir, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and your name and address, please?
John Rosenkrantz, five oh eight North Canyon.
Thank you.
I'm a professional engineer and planner, and I used to do a lot of this planning board, and zoning board work. In fact, um, years ago, I was, had the honor of being the engineer for this board. I, I say that only to indicate that I, I'm familiar with the process. But I'm here as a, a private citizen, uh, who lives in the neighborhood. I guess I got a little confused when the discussion turned to the rearrangement of the lots. I mean, to me, the most important things are consistency and transition, because that's what, that's what you have. And I guess that's what we're, what you were talking about. And I'm talking, it's not what I wrote down here to talk about. The, you have going from this point, this location, going towards Castles, you have many blocks on Vettner Avenue with small lots and three houses on Vettner Avenue. So this, so a three lot arrangement is consistent with, in, in that direction. While it's not like the parkway, it's consistent in the other direction. It is across from Commercial. The, um, the lot that they're asking for a variance, the way this application was made, is roughly the same size as the two existing adjacent lots, the one on Lancaster and the one on Canyon. So it's not like they're, they're proposing a lot that's out of order, you know, with the neighborhood. And those lots make a transition to the smaller lots as you go north on, on Lancaster Avenue in particular. So it seems to be a, the, what they're proposing is, is the correct balance. It's not the parkway. The parkway is very wide, has two landscape medians, has the coach paths. It can handle the, uh, it's, uh, the large homes you're facing on the parkway. This is not the parkway yet. Vettner Avenue is still narrow. Yet, they're not looking, these are not the tiniest lots that we have in, in the city. So to me, it, it seems like a, a logical transition. I think it, I think it's a good application and, um, deserves to be approved. I'm not, I mean, I understand the discussion about the driveway and things like that, and I think they, those things can be resolved. But I think there should be three lots on this, on this property.
John, are you, are you saying there should be three lots on Vettner Avenue, or three lots on the property, however you can fit the, the three lots on there?
Uh, I, well, um, I wasn't really ready for this discussion. I, in, in my mind, when I came, I, I thought three lots facing on Vettner Avenue, like as, like, like the blocks as you go towards Castles seemed to me to be consistent with, with that areas.
Well, I think from discussions last month, the board looked at a dividing line of Jerome Avenue towards Castles and going into the parkway.
I, I wasn't here for that, and, um, I, I admit, it's a, it's a, a subject for discussion. Where do you draw the line? Here's the parkway, there's Jerome Avenue, going the other way, it's small. So, and, and that's what discussion is about. I, personally, I feel that, um, uh, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Ponzi had said. If you, if you put, uh, two eighty-five hundred square foot lots there, at, in Margate, every, every lot is going to get a house built as big as it can be on that lot. And you, it's just not right to have the houses that would, that would develop on an eighty-five hundred square foot lot. I, they won't fit the area, they won't be right across from Commercial. You have, as the other, as a comment was made, Canyon Avenue is narrow once you come down there. I mean, it, it would just, those, those houses would overwhelm that particular location. And, and remember that the...
If they were maximized, that, that was...
If they were eighty-five hundred square, well, well...
If the lots were max, I mean, if the houses were maximized, people want...
I look at what's being built, I don't, you know, I never, I don't see many houses not filling out the, uh, you know, to their...
Well, most of the realtors last month testified that they wouldn't get big houses there because they wouldn't sell. A big parkway house wouldn't sell there, it would have to be a more modest house. And if you're looking down Lancaster Avenue in the one hundred block, two modest houses sold for an average of a million dollars apiece. So two, two blocks closer to the beach, bigger lots, I think there's still viable lots there for two.
Hey, Rich, when they go to sell them, I will guarantee you they will call them parkway.
It's a made up name. It means, it means nothing. It means nothing. Actually, if they're within a thousand feet of the parkway, they call it parkway.
I would strongly suggest that you are going to lose, in my opinion, if you try to put three houses on that street. I can't predict, I can't whatever it. I think...
We're, we're beyond.
Yeah. He's a member of the public.
I, I think we're beyond.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Judge Persky, raise your hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And, uh, your, your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephen Persky. I live at three hundred North Mansfield Avenue.
Thank you.
In Margate. I have no comment with respect to whether there'd be three facing Vettner Avenue or otherwise. In my view, that's a board decision, and as far as I'm concerned, what I have to say is consistent with either approach that the board, uh, would think would be preferable. I don't have a stake directly, other than as a resident of Margate for nineteen forty-eight, you do the arithmetic. I was born and raised on Nassau Avenue. This air, I remember the lot in question before there was a synagogue there. Probably one of the few people in the room that does. I, I played, I, my friends lived on the block, uh, on Lancaster Avenue, right behind it, and I was there every day. My point simply is, uh, that between living on Nassau Avenue, which is, of course, in the parkway... I'm sorry? No, no judges. Well, the judges, actually, when I was growing up, there were three judges. Well, no, three judges on Nassau Avenue, my father, Ropetto, and Ruffenpart. Yes, yes. Where was it? I was born and raised in this immediate neighborhood. I walked by this, the, the, the commercial property that's across Vettner Avenue every day, back and forth on my way to school, at Granville Avenue before I went to Union Avenue School. Um, my point simply is that while it has been referred to tonight as parkway, as far as I'm concerned, it is not parkway. Not when you have the stores directly across the street, not when you had the gas station that is now the doctor's office between Lancaster and Mansfield Avenue. The parkway, in my opinion, starts at Mansfield Avenue, and it runs, uh, down from there. There is nothing, in my view, whether you put three houses facing or you put two houses and one, uh, there is nothing about that design that in any respect compromises, uh, the concept of parkway. And I, and I, I'm motivated to speak only because I heard the references that this is a, a parkway area. I respectfully disagree.
Anyone else from the public?
So we would ask to, uh, you know, based on the comments of the board, uh, obviously, you know, there's not a lot of lots with marginal access, I mean, with a easement behind, that's a little bit irregular, I would agree. But we kind of thought, I mean, obviously, we got the wrong signal last, uh, last month. Uh, we would ask to amend the application to go in the street, Prestolli's suggestion to have the two lots, if that's amenable to the board. We still, you know, we believe that, um, with that, and with that particular... We still, you know, we believe that with that... With that particular application, the lot on Lancaster Avenue would be conforming a hundred percent, and the other two lots would require variances. But we... If the board would see their way to giving us that, we would be more than amenable to amending it.
My question is, how deficient is the lot size in square foot? There's supposed to be six thousand. There's supposed to be six thousand.
Five hundred?
Right, it'd be like an S... It'd be over S-50.
One at a time, please?
Arthur, what's the approximate dimensions of those lots?
Right, each.
Two lots at fifty-five hundred square feet, more or less, would be eleven thousand.
Plus six.
And six thousand on the corner gives you seventeen thousand.
Yeah, it's seventeen thousand total, so it'd be approximately fifty-five hundred square feet each.
And other than a lot area, no, no, nothing else, right?
Correct.
The frontages are fine? Fifty?
Measure lot width.
Lot width might be...
Lot width, technically, how you measure that, if you measure it at the property line of Kenyon, we would meet it. There'd be no problem. We'd have fifty-plus feet. If you would measure it as an average, it might be real close, within a whisker, because we're gonna be at the other end of this, ninety-four, say ninety-six feet, rather than the one-hundred that we would be. So I think if it, on average, it's gonna be like right there. It's just about fifty feet. So if you wanna play it safe, we would ask for a minor deviation in the lot with variance, assuming you would measure it in the average on the middle lot, on these two corner lots.
On the corner.
One of the two lots.
I think it's the lot next to, on Kenyon Avenue, it's a new construction.
Yeah, it's a nice new house there.
Fifty-nine by frontage. It's got a big driveway.
Eighty-seven foot deep.
That's exactly correct.
Six North Kenyon.
Fifty-nine by eighty-seven. So the lot would have but that, would be approximately, it was called fifty-two feet, more or less, by a depth of about, what did I say, one-hundred-and-ten.
Yeah, that was my point. When I looked at that house, I looked at that house for fifteen minutes. It's six North Kenyon, and it goes back halfway down the street in front, to the rear property line, just like two lots would work on that, on the front street. That's what I was looking at for a long time.
Yeah, there's the property line, almost right there, the little one, yeah.
Okay. One more question. Arthur, what's... Lot A is going to be the lot that's on Lancaster Avenue.
Lot A.
Lot B's gonna be the one that's not on Vettner Avenue, correct?
Let's call Lot B in the rear there, Lot C, the corner of Kenyon and Vettner.
And the Kenyon and Vettner, that's fifty-four by one-ten?
Approximately by one-ten, more or less.
And B's fifty by one-ten? Do I have that right?
Yeah, if you can leave it plus or minus, and then I'll get the numbers exactly if the board votes to approve it, I'll give that to Jack.
So Lot B, just to be clear, Lot B would be the only lot, it seems like, that might have a minor front yard deviation?
Here.
Right?
Talking about this one?
Yes. Okay.
I'm gonna try to get... We'll try to make that for sure fifty feet. I think it'll work out. Well, one thing we've been concerned about, especially on Vettner Avenue, is the side of the house facing Vettner Avenue. If they decide to show the front on Kenyon Avenue, if the front on Vettner Avenue should look like the front of a house.
Take Alwander's house. You can take Alwander's house right down the street, hold one, on the corner lot.
Yeah, I know.
The big brick house.
Yes.
Looks gorgeous. The other lot, if you put a house facing the other way on that lot, we should throw you out of town.
I'm not gonna do it.
Okay.
No, I'm just saying that we've had houses on Vettner Avenue with blank walls, and we don't want that. And it's not something that we can stop unless we make it a condition.
Can we make it a condition, have some architectural detail that...
Of the appearance of the front of a house?
Yeah, now who's gonna look at that and approve it?
We've had committees of two that can do that.
Okay, okay.
We did that on a house on Huntington and Vettner.
And we did it on Madison.
Right, I think that's a good idea.
We could do that. It could be Roger and one other member. It doesn't have to be named right now.
Right, okay. So you're gonna put that in there?
Absolutely.
All righty.
I don't know.
You ready?
All right. I will ask Roger McLaren to help me here if I have this wrong. With the reconfigured lot lines, there will be no variance request for Lot A, which is the lot on Lancaster Avenue. It meets all requirements, bulk requirements. Lot B will need a lot area variance. It's gonna be approximately five thousand square feet. It may also need a lot frontage variance. It may be a little bit less than fifty feet. I'm gonna estimate it to be forty-eight to fifty feet, so it may need a variance for that. And Lot C is going to meet, also need a lot area variance.
Correct.
Because it's at fifty-five hundred, not six thousand. The conditions are if Lot C actually has a frontage on Kenyon Avenue, that the Vettner Avenue side shall have architectural features as such like... Such as to make it like a frontage, the front of a home.
Yeah, I mean, could we have it like where the elevation gets approved by, you know, elevation acceptable to Roger and whoever else you wanna?
And agreed.
That's fine.
And it'll be... It'll be approved without having to come back. Once the amended plans are filed, it'll be amended. I mean, the committee will be able to approve it without having to come before the board has the features.
Can I throw one in here?
Sure.
Sorry.
No variances on the houses that are being built?
We said that, so that would be fine. We represented that, yeah.
We can do that.
No front yard fence variance.
Nah. We can't... We can't really say that it can't have variances, but it's on the record right now. So if someone comes in for them, I guess you guys can be guided by that.
Okay.
I can't make it a condition. I can't get variances. Okay.
All right.
Okay, so with that, those variances, as I stated, three. Two lot area and one potential lot frontage for Lot... Lot width for Lot B, with the conditions as I set forth. I need a motion in the affirmative in a second.
I'll second it. Tom Collins?
It'd be nine votes.
As much as Mr. Patterson disagrees with me, we just took a nice, simple, three-lot, beautiful plan of our Ponziios with one variance and turned it into a menage. You might want a fence variance added to that, too. This is a simple subdivision. We can't stop you with variances in the future. It's your right to come to the board. I think it's fine if you're acceptable to it. I think the first plan was better, in my opinion. I like to see Margate going up instead of down, but I still vote for it.
Clem Osleski?
Well, I'm glad I don't have to vote against it. Going down Vettner Avenue from this site along the parkway, the next eleven blocks, there are no more than two houses at the end of the blocks facing Vettner Avenue. So having two houses facing Vettner Avenue here, it's technically not part of the parkway, but visually, it is the entrance to the parkway. And I think what we've accomplished here tonight pretty much satisfies everyone in the room, so I vote for it.
Rich Patterson?
I'm also very glad I didn't have to vote no. I really see this as satisfying the board's problem and the applicant's problem, and I'm glad we could come to... Come to an agreement with... I see terrible detriments and no benefits to the prior plan, and all my concerns have been with the common driveway, with the three houses on the, on Vettner Avenue. My concerns have all been met, and I gladly vote yes on this project.
Mike Cristaldi?
If I voted no, everybody would think I was nuts, so I gotta vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
Well, I went back and forth on the yes and no. I thought that the two eighty-five-hundred-foot lots were large. We tried to do the easement, which I didn't like, although it was part of my recommendation last time. This reconfigured lots, I think, with my Realtor's hat on, are more saleable. I think it fits into the neighborhood. They're S-50 lots in the neighborhood with mixed use and commercial. I would also be afraid that those two big lots would sit there for a while. I think we'd have to find a user who wants to be on those two big lots. Great minds in a room. We did a good job, and I approve of it.
Jim Galantino?
I think lost in this whole scenario is the sadness of losing another business that... Or not a business, it's a community building that was used for sixty, seventy years. And, you know, I don't... I've been in the building a few times, but I know it helped a lot of people. And hopefully, the outcome that comes out of this is a positive and influences the town in a good way. But I'm sad to see it go and hope everything works out okay for everybody, so I vote yes.
Craig Pomisano?
With all the concessions made by both sides, the project's a go. I say yes.
David Carter?
After the two sessions and everybody here at the board and everything that's going on, I vote yes.
Mike Crichman?
Yeah, I like the fact that the one S-60 lot will be closest to the parkway, and I think facing the two lots the other way fits more in with the neighborhood, so I'm gonna vote yes.
The application passes, nine to nothing.
Should we close the meeting?
Yeah, I did. Motion adjourned? Uh, we're not done.
Not done yet. Hold on. Hold on, hold on. Not done yet.
On behalf of the congregation, we just want to thank the board for their openness and for helping us work out the plans to come up with something that works for everybody. Thank you. And we are remaining part of the community. We're just gonna be in one building instead of two buildings.
Thank you, Leo.
Okay. What do you got? All right, can we... We still got a little bit of business here.
Yeah, one minute, one minute.
Yeah, one minute.
One minute.
One minute.
Yeah, one minute, we have to do something. Roger has to do something. You can put your...
Oh.
You don't need my permission.
All right, we're gonna take a vote, so can everybody listen up? Everybody listen up?
Use your gavel.
Pinky! All right, here we go.
I'm gonna let... I'm gonna... One of the applications tonight, which was what, Margie Berger?
Right.
Roger, it didn't go on tonight, but there's...
Please take that outside.
An issue has come up concerning Roger's belief, I think you believe, Roger, that it needs a traffic study. And I think there were some issues about that, not with me or, I think, with the applicant. So I think Roger just wanted to discuss that and just get a board vote after hearing his reasons, whether or not we should require a traffic study for that application.
Thank you. In the engineer's report, he recommends a traffic... It's called a traffic impact statement. And there's certain items in there after changing the traffic pattern that has an adverse effect in a neighborhood, which this application will. The board has to recommend, or may recommend, that a traffic impact statement be required. My recommendation is yes, one should be required. And I've been mentioning this to the applicant last year when he closed off the driveway and created chaos there, that you need an engineered study to prove that this works. And he got a little bent out of shape today about it, but I've been talking about it for a year. But only the board can require it, so I'm recommending that the board make it a requirement. And I told the attorney for the applicant that we'll take a vote tonight and therefore...
Is that after changing the direction of the street?
No, to have a study.
Study for the...
He's closing off a... They're proposing to close off a driveway, which would drive traffic around a residential neighborhood, and... One of the... You know, municipal land use law restricts us from doing that.
Yeah, the site plan law requires, traffic is a big element of site plan action.
Roger, are we... Can we only recommend a study, or we can require a study?
You can require it.
We can require a study. I talked to Amadeo and the chief of police last week, and I said, "What do you think about changing the direction of the traffic on the horseshoe, because people going through Taylor's Gas Station and people coming down, especially delivery trucks coming down the street the wrong way, because there wasn't access over there?" And I don't know anything about traffic. And then the chief came and said, "Well, that creates a problem for the other side, for people stopping in the middle of Vettner, turning in." So, and I said, "I agree with you. I, you know, I don't know anything about it." But that tells me that we do need a traffic study, because my recommendation was bad, and, you know, the chief said we can't do that, so...
We can't force added traffic to a residential neighborhood, either way, whether you change the direction or you maintain a direction. It's...
But I understand the applicant says it's dangerous that they drive through there for what their engineers designed?
Four days after they opened up, after the approved plans were... The ink was still wet. He closed off the driveway and was adamant about... They put chain and...
They put chains.
Yes, but I think the approved plans had that.
Approved plans, their design, their engineered design had the driveway through there.
That's what I thought, so they...
And then they said it was dangerous.
Right, right. That's what I thought, so the plans are...
Are we intending a motion to require a traffic study? I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Let's get out of here.
Now we need a motion to adjourn?
We need a motion to adjourn.
Don't say where you're adjourned to, Mike.